Thank you Christine. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectment meeting for Monday, October 30th, 2017. My name is Scott Bugby. To my right is Jeff Colombo. To my left is Jim Leehan. To Jim's left is Jack Hathaway who just left us for a moment. And to Jack's left is Marion Harrington. I wanted to remind everyone this meeting is being audio and videotaped, consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And will be rebroadcast on NCTV's government channel and upload online to YouTube. Now can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, Jack has just left the room. I usually have him read our agenda. So tonight, at 7:00 PM, we have the KP Budget Working Committee will join us, followed by review of the town warrants, action items considering appointing Gerald Calhoun as a member of the Council on Aging, consider accepting streets as laid out in Keene Pond, review the Fall Town Meeting Warrant and Consider Changes, consider appointing a Register of Voters to fill a vacancy. We're going to consider a one-day beer and wine permit for Marie Simpson for Saturday, November 11. On the discussion items, we'll review public safety building, running gun license, and then we have acceptance of minutes. So folks, would you like to please join us? You're welcome. Don't be shy. This is your moment. Just one.
Just enough chairs here.
We have enough chairs for everybody.
For everybody.
Actually, that was lucky.
Yeah. No, we planned it that way. Planning, planning.
We're not that good at planning.
Thank you guys for coming out. If you can just introduce yourselves, let us know, you know, for the folks at home, and the microphones are for the folks at home anyways, we can obviously hear.
Sure. Kendra Canelli, Norfolk resident.
Scott Manchuso, Rantham resident.
Tracy Malloy, Norfolk resident.
Julie Redd, that's Norfolk resident.
Great. Okay, so we got one, three Norfolk, one Rantham. Thank you for all coming out on a night, a cool night. You want to give us like a little overview for the folks at home on what, I know people have seen different things on Facebook about the different working committees that are going on. Obviously, budget is a big concern for folks, so you guys have a big burden or opportunity.
Yeah. I'll jump in.
Sure.
So I just wanted to clarify that you've invited the community working groups, and we represent three different facets.
Oh, okay.
We represent budget, strategic planning, and community relations.
Thank you.
And you have all of those groups represented here today. They are much larger groups than just the four of us. They're just not here. They do have representation from all three towns on all three groups. And they were really, they were formed last year out of an, really following the budget cycle of the KP School District. We've been working for the last six months to get them up and running. And I'm gonna, we can talk about what each one of these want to do, but they really, we saw it as an opportunity last year during the budget cycle. It was a really high level of engagement in all of the budget meetings from the community. We saw, we heard a lot of vocal people. We heard a lot of passion. And we heard that a lot of people care about the future direction and the current state of KP. So these groups were formed to harness that energy and bring these groups together to do good for the KP School Community. And we have seen to date a large, a large, a high level of engagement in these groups. Scott, would you like to add anything?
Sure. So I'm one of the co-chairs on the Community Relations Working Group. Through the budget process last year, we saw that it took a bit of a knock on our overall trust as a community and each other. But I also saw it as an opportunity to probably better tell the story of KP as the, as a, as a high achieving school. But also some opportunity, there has to be some opportunity to probably improve the overall budget process, but also improve the engagement with the community. One thing I did want to say is, we're not really trying to set up like another layer or another group that people or boards such as yourselves have to work with. We're really trying to enable the school committee and the superintendent and the administration of the schools to better do their jobs. I'm excited about the process that I've seen so far, where the improvements or the plans that are being put in place to penetrate the, penetrate the budget, work on a strategy that will carry us for several years, and then also help us tell that story to the community around both the achievements that we have and the opportunities that we're going to capitalize on to overall improve what we're doing here in the coming years. So Tracy and I are co-chairs on the Relations Group. And so, you know, we'll be working with outlets here in our towns to both learn about what people are thinking about our schools, and then also try and improve on their, their level engagement and their overall opinion of where we're at, and hopefully, hopefully make them proud of KP as a, as a school system in the process.
Do you have like thoughts around, I mean, you know, for obviously parents that have kids in the KP School System, you get a lot of, you know, that weekly newsletter Dr. Mobley's been doing, which is very nice, to how to engage like the folks, you know, like, I'm an empty nester now, but we happen to be hosting our students, so back into the school system. But for the folks that, you know, have the stake and come to the meetings, you know, vote on the budget and obviously pay the taxes for the school, I mean, do you have thoughts and plans around that, on how to engage those folks? Or, because the school system is great. I mean, I think, and they know, because you said your kids were there, right? My, Jim's kids went there, my kids went there, Jeff's kids went there. So I know how good the school system is at KP.
We're, we're empty nesters too. Our two kids are freshmen and junior in college.
Yes.
So yeah, sure. You do get engaged when your kids are in elementary school and middle school and high school differently than when you're not. But yes, to answer the question, yes. I think our schools, you know, I've learned a lot while I've been working with these folks on these committees, or this committee, and learned a lot about what the school does in the community. And I was really kind of surprised. They, a lot of the sports teams are out in the, out in the community doing volunteer work to raise money. The cross-country and track team recently have hosted or is going to host running races in each of our communities to really further their, their, their passion of running, which I think is fantastic. And it's a story that's untold. And I'm sure as we dig, we will find many more like that. So I'm excited about that. And I think that will help people appreciate what these kids are doing and how they're achieving in different ways.
Yeah, I see. See, they give a lot back to the community with KP CARE, ZDECA, everything is a lot, just nonstop, really.
Absolutely.
I read about it every day. There's another event, you can go running, all around running, a lot of that stuff.
Yeah.
Really, since we started looking at this type of thing, like what stories are there to tell, it's amazing how many have come up, like probably not enough people to write up all the stories that there are. So it's really encouraging.
There's a, so I learned this just recently. There's a huge food drive. I'm sure our kids participated in it, but I'd forgotten it over the years. Huge food drive, hundreds to thousands of pounds of food raised as part of the middle school food drive that's kicking off here in days. And right before Thanksgiving, they will award that mostly to the local food banks. Fantastic move for a lot of the families that get involved. And a great, again, another great story to tell about how we're helping out the community based in the KP School System.
Great.
Another thing that we're planning to do is to hold focus groups so that we can talk to all the different types of voters out there and the different people in the community so we can find out how they get their information and what they prefer. Someone who's older may not use social media. They may use print media. So we're definitely going to look at how they absorb information and get information and try to do a better job of pushing it out to all those different areas.
I think they still care. I know this, you know, people, like I said, not having students, they still care. The food drive is very important. Like I said, even if you don't have a kid, how do you donate if you want to donate that way? I mean, you know, you can donate all you're on, but it's nice to get that message out there.
Sure.
Yeah.
And then, do you want to talk about maybe the survey and then the budget?
I can talk about the budget.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to talk about the survey?
Sure. Out of the, you know, we talked about the three groups, budget, community relations, and strategic planning. I'm one of the co-chairs on the strategic planning group. And the objectives that we laid out for this year to get us going was to kind of take a state of the district, a look at the district and see where we are, where we are numbers-wise, statistics-wise, where, and where we are in perception-wise with the community. So we have a couple of parallel activities going on. We're just wrapping up the creation of a survey that will go out to all of our stakeholders, that people can provide input through that survey. In the next couple of weeks, people should start seeing that. And after we finish the rounds of the survey, we're going to do these focus groups that Tracy was talking about, trying to hit all sectors of the community, from senior citizens to students to parents with kids in the school, with kids in the elementary system, without kids. We want to get everybody's perspective. And we'll broadcast that so anybody can sign up for one of those if they're interested. And we're definitely looking to recruit as many people as we can. And simultaneously.
Sorry, Tracy, as you were, do you offer a paper version, just like you said, for the people that, I know they go to the library and get internet access so they can pick up, so you can fill it out besides online, you can do it in writing if necessary?
Yes, we could definitely do that. Yep.
I think most people, but you know, I know you can go to the library and use the computer too to fill it out.
And the other activity that's going on is a group of people with more of a data bent are going to be looking at all of the data metrics out there on DESI and some other sites that offer, and the schools' data as well, that offer us a look at performance metrics around the school, like testing scores and attendance and attrition and post-graduation plans and things like that. So that as an end result of this year, we can come out with a state of the district. We'll combine the, the opinion data, you know, from the survey with the hard data from all the statistics. And that, we are hoping will give us a good basis to launch from for next year to start building where we want to go, a new strategic plan. And all three groups are working on that together, where the strategic planning group is probably taking a lead on the survey and focus groups. The budget group will be looking hard at all the budget numbers. And community relations is doing a lot of looking at where we are statistically as well, because we're all trying to pull our message together and get it out. So a lot of, a lot of work going on.
Sounds like it.
Kendra, did you want to talk about budget?
Budget, yeah. Hot topic. So we, what we are not, we should understand this where it relates to the budget, is we are not intending to build the budget. That is the job of the school administration. But we are a community working group focused on the budget that the school administration has welcomed us in. So they have welcomed us into looking and being part of that budget build, being part of that budget presentation. And what we've said to them is, we'd like to be the folks that first pressure test it. And we can bring a community lens to that pressure testing. And it's, and really, it's been, it's been done with open arms. We also hope to cultivate cost savings ideas that have come up in the community. Some of those came up last year. More of them are still coming up and bring them forward to the school administration. Some of this stuff is, is easy to do and get at right away because we have the budget upon us now for the 2019 cycle. Other stuff will start to plant the seeds and it will take a little bit longer to cultivate. The other opportunity that we recognize we have as a budget group, and we saw this last year when we were sitting in the meetings, is there are lots of points that come up in the budget presentation that our community, larger community, is ill-informed about. And a lot of those are around the unique challenges of regional school budgeting. And we should do a better job at educating that larger community about those uniqueness. And that's, we can help bring that message forward. Whether that message, it'll be developed along with the school administration and the school committee, but we can bring our lens to that.
Very helpful.
I think what you guys are doing is wonderful. KP's coming off a tough year. And they've had several tough years, but last year was exceptionally tough. And I think for you folks to get involved and to bring other people involved is really just phenomenal. A lot of it, I'm not a Facebook fanatic. I'm of a different generation. So you know, you have to tolerate that. I don't go on Facebook, which is probably a good thing.
Some days, yes.
But other folks obviously do. And unfortunately, that provides the opportunity for misinformation for people to misrepresent facts. And the more we get the community involved and they hear the actual events and the good things that go on at KP, I think there's nothing but good with that. But I'm kind of curious. You attend, you know that we've had, several of you attended the meeting that we had with the other two towns, which was a non-quorum. Jack and I were there from Norfolk. There was a Selectment and Finance Committee from each of the towns. Our, we, our town meeting is the first out of the lot. So we kind of set the core as to what other towns may or may not do. Now, they don't have to agree with us, and rarely do they agree with us, but we try to mitigate, if you will, some common ground so that we don't get into the situation where we're so apart that we can't come to some resolution that meaningfully helps KP. And you were at that meeting, some of you were at that meeting. I'm curious what your feelings were about that meeting. And then I'll share mine. But, but I'm curious what you thought about that meeting. Let me preface it by saying, I don't want to put you on the spot to, you know, I'm not asking you to focus on one town versus another, but you do have very different perspectives from the three different towns. We're not all on the same page on how we view this. And, and we're not all in the same financial position on how we view this. So you've got to somehow, we have to mitigate this. I think what we're doing, in terms of having these meetings with the three towns, even in an on-quorum relationship, I think is a very healthy thing. I wish we'd been doing it more over the years because at least it gets us on some platform where we can begin to discuss the problems and the issues. So I think the meetings have been a healthy process. But the proposal of a 3% increase on our allocation, you know, that portion that we pay really amounts to less than about 1.5% or even less than that on the school budget. 65% of the school budget is salaries, 65%, 66%, 67%, somewhere in that range. And contractually, they're all in the 3% range. So, you know, just do the numbers. It doesn't work. So, you know, how we work through that and how we mitigate that is something that we've got to figure out how. So I'm curious what your reflection was on that meeting.
I can go. I, yeah, I've done that kind of back-of-the-envelope calculation. Yeah, I'm concerned because you've got some things that are built-in accelerators, contractual accelerators that, that, you know, you've promised raises or you deal with National Grid or what have you. And rarely do those things contract. So yeah, I'm concerned with pitting a 3% allocation increase versus some, some guaranteed or, you know, contractually arranged increases. Because I don't think you can cost save your way all the way to, to enhancing a school program for, for our kids. Now, I have not taken a look at, and I'm sure Larry is the, the, the budget head at KP Schools now, is, is working through that budget. I'm optimistic to see, to see that in the first cut. But yeah, I'd be concerned with growing the capability of, of the schools, given that 3% increase. But on the same token, I understand the situation we're in, we collectively, the three towns are in. I know Rantham went through a hard time because they had a limited amount of funds. And if the KP schools were going to come in at over, over their, I'll say allotted amount or allocated amount, that meant cuts in other departments. And that went on. That's not fun to do and in some cases, not healthy to do. So.
It's a tough one. And I don't know the answer either. It's, it'll be an ongoing dialogue and see how we work through it. But.
But I think, you know, one, one thing that did came up in the, in the conversation at that meeting, and as a direct question, I think from one of the people on, on the committee, if you will, or on the other side of the table, was, are you looking at other funding? So yes, I think we're, we're looking at other funds, funding sources, and that would be a smart place to go. I don't know if we have the capability to, as a citizen group, do that yet this year, but that would be a great place to go. And then, how do you end up, I think as someone else said, how do you end up banding together with other regional schools that are in our same situation to go figure out what's going on at the state level? Because we are challenged in that area too. So how can you go grab more, more money? I don't think that's a fast fix either.
I think that's a very slow fix.
Yeah.
I wish it weren't. But I mean, we, our state aid here in Norfolk, when we had the dramatic cuts in, I think it was 2008, if I remember?
Seven.
Yeah, seven and eight. We still haven't gotten back to the level of our funding in 2007, 2008.
Sure.
So it, the, it's a very optimistic approach, but not a realistic approach that we're going to get any additional funding other than what we have, our traditional 1%, 2%, 3% increase on a good day process. So somehow, we've got to work through this. I don't know what the answer is either.
Sure.
I think we're, I think this group has reached a point of a good starting point. You know, it's a good place to begin the dialogue and to create a process. But realistically, it's not a place we can end up.
Sure.
But I do think it's a good start. How come we, what questions do you have for us? And are you going to meet with the other boards of selectmen as well?
We have, we have asked. We have somebody that knows the other boards of selectmen that are looking to create those invitations.
Okay, great.
So, yes.
So do you have questions for us that, how can we help?
I guess one that might, that jumps out is, you know, of the various things that we've talked about that we're looking at, do you see any holes? Is there anything that you would say would like you to look at this type of thing right off? I mean, we, we need time to get through all of the things that residents put on the table. And there were lots of great ideas from, you know, going to look to corporations to create relationships with them, or start a fund drive, I forget what you call it, when, that people can contribute to, things like that. There's, there's lots of things on the table for subsequent years. We tried to pluck off what we thought was most important, like top priority and, and doable in our first year. But if there's anything you see that
We should be working on.
we should be working on, we'd be open to that.
Yeah.
I mean, if I, if I repeat something that you already talked about, forgive me, I have to go take a phone call. But it would seem to me this year, and I think I'm telling you all, the obvious thing that you probably saw from last year is just the communication between the, the school and the community. You know, they, just as an example, you know, what we, what we all probably saw was, you know, they got, the school committee got killed for, sometimes for over-communicating, and then they got killed for under-communicating. And if you can kind of figure out how to make that communication between, you know, the school, I guess, and the, and the public, just help them make it more, not, I don't mean transparent in fact that they were doing it, just more broad or more, better market it, their, their communication. I think that would be, you know, at least take a lot of the angst out of the process.
Specifically as it relates to budget, right, Jeff?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Like you said, you're pressure tested first to put an eye on it. Because Kendra had mentioned, you know, again, examples, don't come in with a 15% increase because it's just going to scare the crap out of people. That's not fundable or reasonable.
Yeah.
It's ideal if we had unlimited funds, but
Sure.
But, you know, I mean, I think that process that you're talking about of the pressure tester for smell test, if you'll look at it first to see what, you have, you know what the perception is going to be if you come out with that. And you talk about, you know, X number of cuts, 90 cuts if they don't get this, 100 cuts if they don't get that. Again, you go back, I mean, they talked about it last year, right? There was going to be X number of cuts. I think one, one, one position was maybe cut when it was all said and done, I think, if I'm not mistaken. I mean,
Vice Principal.
You know, that makes it hard for the residents to buy into any of that or believe in. As you guys know, you saw from the Facebook page that went on last year. I mean, it was like, it was minute-by-minute reading of what's going on.
It was, I thought it was frustrating, Jack, to talk about a little bit better dialogue or a little bit better understanding and transparency. As, as someone who came into the process, a little bit late, maybe in the February, March timeframe, I felt like I didn't have as much context as I needed to understand where we were going or what we were talking about. We were right into the numbers, and I didn't know what this was going to achieve. And was level funding good?
Yeah.
Or the not. Should we be level funding and funding what we did last year because it delivered? Or did it under-deliver and we should be cutting it? Or should we be cutting some and growing others? I, I didn't know what, what to do. And I think we can do a lot better job there.
I think, I think the more you can reinforce, I mean, ultimately, every town, it comes down to financials.
Sure.
And all of these other activities are wonderful things to do, but the ultimate vote comes down to financials. So I think anything you can do to help influence, and you've heard us in these meetings kind of reiterate this, there is a credibility gap in that process. And it is self-imposed, unfortunately. Now, they had a little bit of the perfect storm last year that, I'll just say compounded their issues. But we, anything you can do to encourage the school committee to present this in a more realistic fashion, and to start with a more real, and this is what we're reinforcing in that working group that we've put together. I think we'll go a long way towards establishing that credibility. You can't solve this by throwing one-time funds at the problem as they did two years ago, $850,000 of E&amp;D funds only increases the base that we worked from the following year and has a wider gap in the second year. So, and I, and they had some issues associated with the finance director last year. And hopefully Larry will bring us, if you will, a refreshing perspective to giving us some numbers that we can understand. The other thing I would encourage you to try and reinforce them is simplify the process. The average citizen is not going to read through 29 pages of that budget. They're just not. And it's an unmanageable process. There are those goofy people like myself that like those budgets, but most people don't. And so it needs, you need to break this down into one or two pages so that it's much more simplistic, much more easily understood by the average person. And I think that will help a lot to creating some credibility. And I think you can influence that a lot. I think you folks may, actually may influence it more than we can. So those are some things that I think will help. Start the process early. You know, let's engage in this. I know this, we're going to meet with the school committee, I think now it's late November, 28, somewhere around there. Is it the 28th?
28, I think, yeah.
Okay. And that'll, that'll be hopefully a very productive meeting. I hope you guys will be there for that, because I think it's important for you to participate in that. But we have to fix it. I agree with, you know, our schools, someone said many, many years ago, I will not take credence for this, or credit for this, but the most expensive room in your home is the classroom. You know, our schools are critical to everything we do in this community. And KP is a critical component. We own it. It's our school. And, you know, we have to work. We have partners. So we've got to bring those partners in. So anything you can do to help Rantham and Plainville, you know, you may have more influence there than we do in helping them sort of understand that we're, we're in this mess together. And we can't turn our back on the school system. We can. But we have to mitigate the issues that have been in front of us. Last year was not a good year. And we've got to figure this out.
A question regarding
I'm thrilled you guys are doing what you're doing.
The, and I applaud your efforts. I mean, it's, it's something I think we've needed for a long time in the community. So hopefully you'll have a number of people that step up to support your efforts, because I could see where there's a number of components to this. And you've organized yourself well with the various committees or groups. Do you refer to them as groups or committee?
Working groups, yeah.
Working groups. So, you know, I try to separate the budget from the process side, which we talked about. And that's something that I think has been lacking in recent years and caused a lot of frustration. And we saw that last, last year in particular. But in terms of the content of the budget, what's your feeling in terms of your level of participation in terms of content? Do you view this upcoming year as having input, but perhaps there is going to be a period of time where you're collecting data? So it may not be for another year before you have as much input as perhaps you'd like to have just because of the, you know, the, the work that needs to be done in order to, to make decisions in terms of priority? Because ultimately, it comes down to priority in terms of how those funds are allocated.
What do you mean by input? Can you clarify when you say that we would have input, that our group would have input to the?
Yeah. So the budget is basically however many line items it is in terms of, you know, costs for different types of programs that, you know, require a certain resource. And, you know, yes, we have, you know, a group of teachers that have certain expertise. So there's certain elements of it that are fixed. And then you have, you know, what's variable that you can influence from year to year, or if not from year to year, over some period of time. So do you see the groups having significant input in terms of the spend, in terms of where the, the proceeds are being spent? We've talked about process in terms of the timing and who's got a seat at the table and communication and such. But in terms of the actual allocation, and I know there's constraints. It's not something that you can take a clean sheet of paper and
I can take the answer to that. I think a couple of things are happening. I think we have a new finance director this year that started just before the budget cycle began. So I, I do think we need to give him time to do his job. And I think his first job is kind of going through every single account and making sure he understands and can reconcile those accounts. And that also lends itself to the credibility issue that we may be having and the trust issue that we need to build. So I do think that's the first step, and that I do think needs to be done by them. And we can't influence that. That's their job. Then I think, yes, I do think it does take time to be able to actually then, once that's done, get in and say, what are the choices we want to make about how money is spent? Because there's been choices that has been made to date to say, this is how we think this $34 million budget looks like. And those are choices we've all this $34 million budget looks like and those are choices we've all agreed and I say we collectively, we as a town, we as a school administration, we as a school committee. And to whether we want to now question some of those choices, yes, I do think it's probably premature to say that's something we can jump into in this budget cycle.
But maybe going forward, I mean, it makes, I mean, it's hard, some things are just contractual, you can't, I don't want to say question, especially, you know, you can't allocate dollars which are under IEP plans, but you have decisions on unified arts versus language or something like that or, I assume that's what you mentioned, like stuff like that.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of things, I mean, it could, could have to do with anything, including, you know, maintenance on the building, I mean, there's all kinds of things that it could potentially include.
I think we're trying to get a handle on what that real number is. I mean, we're still trying to figure out what, what there is that, that can change a little bit, that's not fixed. And one of the things that won't happen this year, but doing the survey will help us understand where the community sees value and where they think King Philip, they'd like to see improvement. So do, are they interested in class size, technology? You know, we can't spend money on technology if nobody wants us to or it doesn't make sense to, but if they want us to prioritize technology, we'll at least learn about that doing the survey. And I also think there's a lot of, when we get to the budget, one of the things that, there's a lot of opinions about what's in the budget, but there's not a lot of, you know, there's a lot of arguments that take place over what gets spent on this or that and it's not laid out very clearly, the facts are not laid out. It's not easy to say, well, actually this is the amount spent on X and Y. So I think Larry will do that, a much better job of that and we are there with a different look at it, asking those questions. You know, these are questions that will come up, people want to understand these types of things better. So I think we'll, you know, we're not going to make big decisions at this point because we sort of need to get a better handle on where we are.
This, this year is kind of like a, a big cleaning up year.
Yes.
Like just going to get everything in order and get everybody on the same page and understand where, where we are and where we want to go and hopefully, hopefully build trust in the process and the people and the effort that's being put in and then, you know, it's going to be a multi-year process, but-
But having said that, with, with the direction of less than 1.5% increase, is it your perspective that, that people perceive that effort is actually being done because we can only afford 1.5%, therefore big choices should be made this year?
This is just my opinion. I, I think what you're seeing is a reactionary component to what happened last year. I hope, I hope that's what it is. No, I, I don't think a school system, personal by opinion, I don't think a school system, well-run, well-managed, you know, doing all the right things, can survive on 1.5%. You, you just can't. And we have to deal with that. I mean, the Norfolk school systems have traditionally been anywhere in the neighborhood of, well, we've had some years where, back in the 08, 09 era where we had all these tight budgets, where they were pretty much flat, but on average they were up 3% to 4% pre-gary. Last year it was 4%. And they don't pay for health insurance, you know, we pay for that out of the town budget. KP is running a town, you know, their, their budget is very much like our town budget. And I think that's part of what people don't understand.
Yes.
Is, it's more than just the educational component that we deal with here in Norfolk or Plainville. Well, they're a little different, Rentham is different. I know the town pays for busing in Rentham where we don't here, that's in the, in the elementary budget. There's so much a lack of understanding about how that budget really works and what they're obligated to pay. I think they can do a better job of communicating that. I apologize for, I have a, I have an infected tooth that is causing me to act like I'm, I'm a chipmunk storing food at the right side of my-
He does, he's getting swallowed up by that.
So if I'm, I'm slurring, it is, it is not in a party, nor is it medication, it's-
Just no drooling.
Or drooling, I'm not even drooling, but I, it's a new experience for me, I've not had this, a toothache before, but anyway. The more, the more we can, I kind of lost my train of thought thinking about chipmunks, the more we can isolate the issues and have people understand that they are really running a, a town.
Yes.
They, they have to pay health insurance, they have to pay all of the liability insurance, they have to pay all of the things that we pay here in the Norfolk budget-
Sure.
That are not part of the elementary school budget. And Norfolk is traditionally, as I said, 3%, 4% because that's what their contractual obligations are. And so somehow we've got to overcome that. The problem is, is when they come in and ask for 10%, like they did last year-
23.
Then, then we all sit there and shake our heads and say, how? You know, what, help us understand that. And that's been the history. So that's what has to change. And I think that's what you're hearing with this small working group that we have is we want them to start down here. And so I, I don't think we'll end up there, but they've got to start down here and validate why they need to go up to here versus what they've always done, which is starting up here and then working their way down and never making the cuts that they professed that they would make. So, and that's where the credibility gap comes in.
Yeah.
So if you can help us overcome that, I think that'll go a long way. And, and it's going to take a few years, I think, to work our way through this. This isn't going to be a quick fix. But my concern is, is that, that we become too dogmatic in our approach to this and that we try to fix it too quickly and cause major problems for the school system. I mean, you know, just saying, oh, sorry guys, you screwed up for 10 years, we're not giving you any money is not the right answer.
We won't let that happen.
Well, I know, but, but, you know, there are three, there are three towns that vote this. And I, I, that worries me, that we will impose a, a level of funding that just will legitimately cause them problems.
Well, we're not quite there yet, there, there's a lot of work still to be done on the budget to see what the, what the gap is, right, between-
Yes.
-the funding and what a level service budget would bring, but, you know, I guess once we get there, we'll be able to clearly state what, what the gap is and what, what, what you would be paying for or what you'd be losing.
Yeah, history, history is a great teacher of our future. And if you go back and look at some of the decisions we, that schools have had to make back in the mid 80s when we had these problems and we had to make cuts in order to be able to survive our systems, it takes years to get those programs back. Years. And that's what I worry about, that if, if you start dismantling the system to meet a specific number, it will be a long time before you ever get them back. And we've experienced it. I, I mean, we've had it here in Norfolk where we had to make those cuts and it's taken us a long time to get some of those programs back.
I think that we, at least I personally felt that's the direction we were headed at the end of the budget season last year, that, that that's where we would be and for this upcoming season and that's why we got so involved. We said, this is, we're headed in a very dangerous direction here and we have to help right the ship. And, I mean, we have asked a lot of budget questions and one of the questions that we've brought forward is, is let's see the real apples to apples comparison between the elementary schools and the high school budget because they are so different. And so when you look at giving King Philip 3% and you look at giving Norfolk 3%, that's a very different thing because Norfolk doesn't have to pay for as many things as King Philip does. And I don't think people really understand that. So you need to, to figure, get that straightened out through the budget and do all the analysis to show that and then you need the community working groups to, I mean, excuse me, the community relations group to get, help get that message out. So we're all sort of working together to try to-
And a high school budget will always be higher than an elementary school budget.
Yes.
Elementary schools don't have varsity sports, varsity programs, clubs, all of the things that you see in a high school program-
Yes.
And they all have to be funded. So just by the nature and the design of a high school, it is a more expensive operation. And that sometimes is, people don't understand that. You cannot take the elementary school, Norfolk and say 3% and compare it to KP, you just can't.
We're also going to look at the towns that, that touch King Philip, the geography, so Walpole, Millis, North Attaborough, Foxborough, that's another activity, we're doing analysis on how, what their per pupil spend is and what, just different, different statistics in their schools, but it's very challenging because we're in a unique situation at King Philip and trying to figure out the true pu, per pupil spend in a high school where, but the school's K through 12, it's really, it's tricky, but it's something that's on our list that we're trying to-
Yeah, and not all towns fund their schools the same way.
Yeah, so you really have to-
It's a, it's a very hard analysis to make, it's not a linear equation.
No.
It's difficult to make that comparison.
And so that type of thing is going to take a long time, but it's helpful to know. If you look at a piece of paper and you see a statistic that says, you know, KP has the highest per pupil spend, well, what does that really mean? You have to dig so deep to really understand that. So that's sort of on the, it's on our list.
But we're not the highest, by the way, we're way down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we're not.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we've looked at different things and said, wow, that seems shocking at first glance, but you really need to understand what's underneath all that, so.
But that soundbite can get out there and then on social media, like as to your point, Jim, you get multiple comments on it. And then it's like, you've got to put it out in a public forum where everyone hears the same message one time.
Yep. And, and they're not easy to understand, right? So if you try and, if you believe that the dollars per pupil are an apples to apples comparison, but when you peel it back, you have to get down a couple of layers to understand truly, it's not an apples to apples comparison. And, and for the reasons you cited, this is why a high school costs more than an elementary school to run, if you want to deliver a program that's competitive either in our region or in the state. And then, you know, and then nationally, right? But we're also looking at, as best we can, some regional schools to benchmark against to here in, in the Commonwealth.
KP usually, I don't know if they did it last year, but they used to do, always do that as part of the budget book was to compare to other regional school systems.
Yep.
Like Minuteman, it's not that many and they're different, they're different parts of the state too, so there's a throw there too because we tend to be a little bit more affluent, you know, and-
Right.
So you have different things, but the Minuteman is a few, it's not main, you know, Lincoln Sudbury, you got a few Dover Sherbrooke.
Oh, but there's a group of storage schools across Massachusetts that represent 7 through 12.
Right.
And we can compare to those group of schools. Now, the demographics may be different, but-
At least it's a starting point, it's a baseline point.
That's right.
How you normalize those numbers after that is probably the hardest problem.
Right.
It's like peel it back, make sure it's a valid comparison.
Sure.
Well, I really hope you'll, you'll have a similar opportunity with the other towns.
We uncovered something that, that you guys might find interesting. Have you heard of the website cleargov.com?
What was that?
Cleargov.
It's cleargov.com.
You have, Jack?
I have, I have, last year I saw it, the salesman came by.
Okay, so we were, we, we came across that-
Cleargov.com.
Cleargov?
Yeah.
C-L-E-A-R, gov?
Yep. It's a company in Hopkinton and they take all the information from the, from the Massachusetts State website and then they incorporate it into slide, different sort of slides and-
Like an infographic.
Yeah.
It's like slices of data, right?
All different slices of data, so you can look at, you can click on Norfolk and you can see a little bit about it now, but if you unlock it, which means you buy it, then you can really dig down and look at, at Norfolk, you know, the median income and the percentage of households of, you know, that are, across different demographics. It's very, very interesting and we, they also do it for the schools. So it's not, it's not perfect, but it is quite interesting and it's, we've started looking at it with King Philip and it's only $5,500 a year. So it's not an expensive product and it's, it's kind of neat, so.
It's almost like hiring a, an employee for that amount, for the, for the effort that it would take a data specialist to create all those graphics and keep them updated and, I mean, they're really, really beautiful as far as like, you know, spent hours in there drilling around, learning stuff about the school while they unlocked it for us this past week. But we're hoping, you know, whether through something like that or just through our own efforts that we can create a site on the new school website that just went up this week, that would be like a, what are we calling it, a, a data dashboard that any, any community member could go out and get a quick, take a quick look and get a, a view of where the school is at and everybody can drill around and learn stuff and, and like you're talking about, the data is in one place and the story is in one place and so that will kind of eliminate false information, you know, everybody's getting the same story.
It's pretty interesting. You can look at Norfolk and see all, where all this money, the school money goes, how much goes to KP, how much goes to the elementary and then, you know, tri-county, it's just-
You can create your own groupings, we were talking about comparing to the different regional schools or the surrounding communities, you can, it's customizable, like you can, we can create one group where we look at ourselves, KP compared to the three feeder towns, we can do another group with KP to all of the surrounding community towns if people are just interested in, you know, I want to know what our neighbors are doing and how we compare to our neighbors that are near us. Or we could look at ourselves compared to all of the regional schools in the, in the state.
Is it, do you know Julie, is it a site license, does the school got it, KP is a single user or is it enterprise type license, like, you know, that 5,500 you mentioned, does that give unlimited access?
It's wide open, anybody can look at it. And, and the towns can jump on board with the municipal site and you get, what was it, 15%, 10% discount?
Oh, yeah, so if, if we were ever, if Norfolk ever thought, oh, we, this is interesting, we would definitely want to get together with the elementary schools, the, all the KP towns and just, and, you know, price that accordingly to the whole district. But it's, I found it to be a very interesting tool looking at the school, but it's also a very interesting tool looking at the town.
What did they say, have they got like 99, 99 in Massachusetts or countrywide now? 99 municipalities and schools?
Millis is a town, so you can go in and look at Millis and see all the data that's available if you unlock it.
See, I was going to put it there.
Pretty interesting.
It's, it's unlocked right now, I, I was still looking at it today, so they haven't, they haven't locked it up yet. If you want to check it out, you go to cleargov.com, right?
Yep.
And then type in King Philip, it'll pop up and then you can drill around.
It'll tell you, it'll tell you it's locked and then click okay and it will then show.
Then it'll show, oh, okay. It doesn't tell me it's locked and it's more anywhere.
So Millis, Medfield, Walpole, Medway, Hopkinton, they're all paying customers, so you can look at all their data to see what would be available to Norfolk if we were to purchase that. It gives you a better sense of what's, what's really there. It's pretty interesting and then you can poke around in their schools too. It's, it was quite interesting.
You might want to take a look at, we just finished our housing production plan.
Oh, you did?
We did. And it's, it's been accepted by the state and certified, so we're, we're good to go.
That's great.
But the data, a lot of the data you're talking about is in that housing production plan.
Oh.
Maybe they got it from this webpage, I don't know, we hired a consultant to, to prepare this for us, but there's a lot of detail in there that is quite interesting, things I did not know about Norfolk.
Where is that?
If it isn't online, it will be online shortly, it'll be on the town webpage. I can get you a hard copy of it if you'd like, but it gets into all of that median income, all of that information is all in that housing production plan.
Now, now DESI is the state site, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is that what it stands for? And all of, all of the state or a lot of it is, is out there as well, free for anybody to look at. The difference between DESI and Cleargov is that Cleargov takes it and matches it around and, and makes it so that anybody can look at it and understand it, whereas you kind of have to be a data junkie to look at DESI and-
Yeah. And in this, I think in this time of uncertainty and change, I think being able to see the data on an apples to apples comparison and being able to drill through it if you want to, to kind of learn the story and get it validated for anyone who wants to go and poke around, I think can be valuable for KP certainly.
I'd love to look into it.
I was impressed.
Yeah, well, we don't want to take up any more of your time, we thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. The work you're doing, we'll continue to do hopefully for years to come, we really appreciate it. Don't give up work, I know it's hard work, yeah.
Oh, they will not give up.
And we, and just so, you know, we have, I'd say 30 people working on the initiative across the three towns, so.
That's just a start, too.
That's just a start, yeah.
Yep. And for anybody watching, more are always welcome.
Oh, yes.
Constantly.
Do your public service, your PSA announcement, get in contact, you know, how to get involved.
Yeah, if you want to find out more information, you can find out more information, if you're on Facebook, at King, search King Philip Community Working Groups, you'll find us there. Or KP, Community Working Groups, kpcwg1@gmail.com if you want an email address. We'll get back to you. But thanks very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Let us know how we can help.
Good luck with the whole town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's up? There goes that crowd. You know, you're welcome to stay. I know, I know I can't convince you, but you're welcome to stay.
That wasn't the end, was it?
No. You guys were the best part. You guys were the best part. So, I mean, now we get to the.
Jack's part.
The more mundane part, under the report of the one.
So I think, it sounds like we're having audio challenges, but.
Hear this evening?
Our friends at NCTV, yes. But when they rebroadcast it, they're confident it'll be okay. It's just the live transmission is, people can hear us. I've gotten texts from a few different people, including Paul, who said, we need subtitles, but he can understand us, but it's not great. But Christine said when they rebroadcast it, or put it on YouTube, it'll be.
Hopefully, that's it, I thought was important.
Yeah, maybe because of Jim's tooth they were talking about, they couldn't understand.
Yeah, well, it could be.
I think that's why.
That's too bad.
He's the one that, all right. On the warrants, I think Jim and I have signed the warrants that Ben Dooley.
Yes.
Have you done sign? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have appointing Gerald Cahoon as a member of the Council on Aging. He wrote a nice letter to us. Can I get a, um, motion, sorry. Thank you. I lost my shirt, I thought to appoint Gerald Cahoon as a member of the Council on Aging to term to expire June 30, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Any further questions? Thank you very much for your service. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for volunteering.
All right, Jackson rolling some ILOs, looks like, for acceptance of streets laid out in Kinney Pond, Wild Holly Lane, Meeting House Road, and Castle Road, per the article in the final town meeting warrant, and signed the plan, so. You guys have seen him, over here, you have to sign it.
Yep.
I never got to sign a ILO before. I feel like Jeff now is.
Oh, I saw a lot of them.
So do I have, any question, motion first to approve or accept the streets?
Uh, the planning board has signatured this as well. Have they?
They've already signed it.
They've already signed it. Okay, that was my question. That's all I needed.
No, that's a good point. They're really smart authority on that, less than us. Yeah, they're putting me in like I'm accepting a road, is not a good thing.
I will move, I will move to accept Kinney Pond, Wild Holly Lane, Meeting House Road, Castle Road, per the article on the town meeting warrant.
Second. All right. Any other questions? Jack, any issues? I mean, obviously the planning boards have viewed it approved it.
No, so there are going to be three separate.
When we go through the warrant a little bit, there's a couple changes from what you saw before, and we still need to number them. I did number them, but you may want to reorder them. But you will notice that we had one article for road acceptances before, and we just, per town council, we split those up, just, he said, just because if, for some reason, somebody wants to vote down one road.
Yep, no, make sure it's already voted down.
So we did that. So there are eight, nine, and 10, I think, right now, is those three articles. As I said, I did not prioritize them. You may want to reorder them.
Okay. So other than that, vote, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's skip the time being, just for a sec, just to do the easy ones. Consider appointing a registered voter to fill a vacancy. So we had a.
We had a letter from Mary Sharkey, was nominated by the Republican Town Committee, and the Democratic Town Committee did not have a nominee.
Motion to approve or appoint?
So moved.
Second. Any further questions? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is a one-day beer and wine license at the Grange, and there's a bit of a surprise party going on here, so if I, we don't have to say the name on the air, that would be helpful. She, the person who is the applicant here is the host.
So moved.
Second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's a closed party, he's not a.
It's not open to the public, right? It's got a caterer in, it's got a licensed bartender, so.
Yeah.
Did that, so you want to do town.
Do the town warrant?
Sure.
So still, Mr. DeLuca and I are finally spending some time tomorrow at 11 o'clock to still, you'll see, there's still a couple things that need wordsmithing. And we, and there's, there's two articles on here that if you want to have them on the warrant, we'll have to open the warrant just to add them. But those are at the end. So if you want, I'll just go through real quickly, one through the end.
Yep.
One through 17. So the first one is transfers. Todd has already presented transfers to the advisory board. I think they have a few questions, and we're going to go over them again this Wednesday. Nope.
What's the sum total of those transfers?
I don't know, but the majority of the things are, there's about $100,000 coming back from King Philip because of the way we created the budget in the spring, and the other towns didn't come up to match our number. And then the elementary school is, has about 60-some-odd thousand dollars going back to them. They have, they've had a couple special needs kids added, and then they have, they're trying to do a population survey through NESDEC to kind of validate what we think is the population growth for the next couple of years. That's just only an $1,800 bill, but trying to do that. And then $9,500 to do a, it's actually under the capital budget, but $9,500 under the building study to put together a feasibility plan for putting an addition on to the Freeman Kennedy School. Actually, I can go, I'll go grab that, the sheet from Todd, and just give that to you.
That's close enough for now.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And the capital items, IT is about $12,000. The facilities is about $14,000. The town clerk was $10,000. Two police cars would be $100,000 total. The fire duty truck, that's the lieutenant's truck, that's the truck that has the water on the back, $190,000. The DPW dump truck, that's again, one of those big plows. We've been trying to replace a couple of those over the last few years, because we've got seven of those that do all the plowing in town, and we've got two that are down now. So we're trying to replace one of those at about $150,000. And then a pickup truck, which is, I'm not sure what Todd earmarked for that. I think it was in the $30,000 range. And I'll give you, I should have brought that sheet down, I'll give it to you. It has all the capital and transfers on it.
And it all comes to 532, 269?
It does. And then the water vehicle truck, which is about $100,000, and a tag-along trailer, which is about $14,000 from the water department. That water service truck is to replace the van that they've been using from the COA, that's kind of a hand-me-down. But that's got a significant transmission issue right now, and we need to, so this is a truck that basically, we can put all our tools on. It's kind of like an ambulance, if you will. It's a truck that, you know, they can bend pipe, cut pipe, you know, has all the stuff that they would need to respond to a water break.
So of the 1.5 that we had certified, does that include prison mitigation?
Does.
So, we're going to spend 532 on capital. We're going to put 250. Do you have any feel for what you might consider for the preliminary budget?
Like to get to zero.
No, you use no free cash now?
So.
I mean, for next year's budget.
Correct. Sorry. I mean, you're in the process.
So we have, we still have six, about $600,000 left if.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, I really, I think we used.
For what? What are you talking?
Would we use for this year's budget?
We used around two.
Yeah, I mean, you know, ideally get down to zero, but, but as long as we use less than we used last year, that'd be certainly heading in the right direction.
Agreed. What other, how are we positioned for the roof at HOD? Have we gotten that money from the state yet?
We've not gotten that money from the state, yep.
Do you think we might get it while we're all still alive?
I hope so, before your tooth gets repaired. I have been told that is.
This is a school building. This is, we've got about, close to a million bucks supposedly coming back?
Yeah, I can tell you.
Oh, it's for the new school?
Yeah.
I think it's for the roof, okay.
Well, we were going to use it.
That's what he started, but that's what, the idea is to use that, if we can use that money.
Back, and we've already invested.
We don't have it. They haven't sent us the check.
Yeah. It's supposed to be $900, something thousand dollars, so.
And what do they say when you ask?
But they closed it out. Didn't Todd say he had everything closed out?
Todd had, Todd has it, has it all closed out, Todd, school Todd, has it all closed out. And Jocelyn Lesser supposedly, that was the project manager, supposedly did all their stuff. And the last we knew, we had, I think Scott, you had to sign, I had to sign something, you had to sign something, and the chairman of the school committee had to sign something. This was like six months ago, or maybe it was, maybe it was the last chairman.
Mr. Plumbo.
Maybe it was Mr. Plumbo. We all signed something that, that was, that school building, MSBA was going to use to process all of that.
And we still haven't gotten it.
Still haven't gotten it.
Do they have a reason? I mean, I don't understand, again, I know I'm naive when it comes to state stuff, but.
Um.
What's up? What'd they say when you asked?
Ingrid's office is calling them on a, you know, a monthly basis, if not more frequently, to try and get it. I'm not.
Did they at least use the words that checks in the mail, like the old days?
No, I don't even think they're saying that. I think it's still being processed. It's got to go through, you know, one of the board meetings with the MSBA. I'll reach out to Sean Dooley, see if he can nudge somebody.
It's ridiculous.
It's probably, yeah.
That's ridiculous.
We haven't needed the money, so I haven't, you know.
And we're going to reapply for the half a million for next year?
We're going to apply for the money to replace the, it's all day roof.
Because it'll be 20 years and not 30?
Yeah. We'll wait 10 years and tell us the third.
Partnership with the state is a tough, tough, tough deal.
Article four, I think that's, I think that was a.
That's me.
That's a number, yeah, we had talked about trying to put into the stabilization fund.
Gets us to 2 million or so?
About 1.6, 1.6 and a half.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Is that about right? 1.6 and a half, somewhere around there? 1.65?
Todd corrected us.
It was 1.4.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like the higher number. I like that round number, 2 million times, nice, but any increases, like you said, to the bar.
Well, if you have the free cash, you're at 2 million.
Article five is just a committee reports. Article six and, article six, Emery went and presented those to the advisory board. That was, the first one is to, make sure I get these straight. Oh, it's just to allow somebody to pay a, so we can bill people, if they've got a tax bill for less than $100, we can pack that, bill them all in one, one bill rather than over four payments, yeah. They don't happen very often. The second one is the one that the advisory board spent a lot more time talking about. It's, what it does is allow us to issue a, you know, I guess not issue a letter of good standing for somebody who comes in and applies for a permit. You know, it's usually, you're talking about building permits or, you know, electrical, gas permits. The way the process works now, according to the bylaws, is we have to wait until somebody is over a year past due for a tax bill before we can say they're not in good standing. What this does is allows, allows us to say that they're not in good standing as soon as they're overdue with a bill. And we had a lot of discussion with the advisory board, you know, concerned that, that we might put somebody in a hardship if, you know, if they have a, they're selling a house and they have to do a septic tank, you know, they have to do a septic, septic work, and they might be, you know, passed, passed to have some past due bills. And then this wouldn't allow them to get a septic tank. Well, we had a lot of conversation, we had, you know, the law doesn't say you have to put them in bad standing.
You just have the right, the ability to do it.
You have the right to do it.
What, is that automatic? I'm sorry, I didn't mean, so if you're not good standing, I mean, if you got put in there, I mean, then you can't get issued a permit, or we can deny the permit, too. So is it a two-step, I mean?
Let me answer it this way. So you could, the treasurer in this case can say the person is in good standing, even if though they have a past due bill, but if they've come, you know, for example, if they've come to the treasurer and worked out a payment plan, or, you know, extain, explain.
Extenuating circumstances.
Extenuating circumstances, such as, you know, we're selling the house, we need to upgrade the septic system, and so we're behind in our taxes, but as soon as we sell the house, you know, we'll pay it off. You know, what this, what, what the situations where it helps us in the other ways, you know, for, for contractors, and both small and big contractors. And really what we're doing, in one situation, we're protecting small contractors who, you know, somebody says, I want to put addition on, you know, I hire Marion to put addition on my house, but I have a, you know, I'm three quarters behind in my taxes. So she doesn't know that, because she's a contractor. She, you know, comes down, pulls the.
You're a payer.
Pulls the permit for me, then I'm, so the town can, is in, is going to deny that building permit and give the contractor the opportunity to at least learn, you know, what's going on before they, you know, before they go any further. And again, I'd have to go to the treasurer and work out a, either pay some bills or work out a payment plan before getting a permit issued. The other situ, so in that case, we're helping, kind of helping this, in my mind, helping the small contractor, like Marion, who doesn't, doesn't, you know, she's available for hire if you're interested. In other situations, we have a lot of, we've had a lot of examples of larger contractors who, subdivision builders, who, for one reason or other, don't pay, you know, they get into, you know, they'll, they'll play.
I see they listen to pay for all the time that they're always.
Yeah, they'll, they'll get behind in their, in their tax bills, and, but I still expect to have lot releases and building permits and all that. And if we have to wait a whole year for them to pay their taxes, it just, it's, so this would give us another tool to manage those types of builders. And again, we can, you know, if they want to come in and work out a payment plan, and, you know, talk to us about, well, if I, you know, I'm running a little bit behind, but if I get this house done, I can, you know, get, get up to date. We have the, we have the ability to do that with them, but we don't have to do it with them if we don't, you know. And I, you can probably think of a few different contractors.
So what's the advisory board's position on it, do you know?
They, I think they ultimately voted to support it. There was a couple people who were just concerned that, you know, not that Emery would, would use it, wield a heavy hammer, but.
I'm sure favorites, they don't like you, so I'm going to deny you, even if you work a payment plan. I see where people go with that. I'm sure that's what people thought.
Yeah, I can, too, but I was shocked that we had to wait a year. I didn't know that.
I know.
I just assumed that if you were too much, you know, two quarters behind in your taxes.
Quarter. You don't have to give your.
I just, I was surprised. So I would, I'm very supportive of this change.
So probably a much longer explanation than you wanted, but.
And I think of it more, I think of it more, I think of it more in the way that you were referencing it with developers.
Yeah.
Because that's really the problem.
My Winston Churchill friend comes to mind.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, because I see the paper full, and small amounts, you know, just pay it then. One, a couple of them was like 56 bucks, it's worth a pain.
It's like a game.
Yeah.
It's a game.
Yeah, and this way you can say, no, I, I like that, yeah.
Yep.
8910, what he told us already about Jack, right?
8910, well done. 11 is about having an appointed town clerk. I think we've talked about that. That's sponsored by the town clerk.
Did they approve that?
They did. Number 12 is by the town clerk, and it's just, is to require, it seems kind of obvious, but as all committees, boards, and commissions are required to keep accurate minutes in accordance with the state law, and have those delivered to the town clerk within three successive meetings to be stored as permit records. Just so that she can, another hammer, whoop, you're going ahead. So the next one, when we went to go rewrite these and put them into form, we didn't realize this one was a zoning article, so the public, the planning board didn't have a time to have a public meeting.
It'll wait till the spring.
So we can have that in the spring.
Okay.
Thank you. Next one is the citizens petition for the energy, for the stretch code. And I think you all did get an email of their presentation.
I saw their presentation. Did they vote that or not?
I don't know if they voted that. I don't think they voted it yet. I think they, they had their presentation last week, and I think they're voting it this week. The next one is marijuana, and they actually voted against that.
Okay, it does.
What?
Yeah.
You are kidding me.
People who want revenue.
I am not.
I know Jim's done the.
Well, we're going to be in for good debate at 10:04. So they, they, they think it's, oh, they are in favor of having.
There was, there was a lot of split. I mean, it definitely was not.
Majority.
Majority.
Well, it was a majority, but it wasn't.
Right, I'm sorry, it wasn't.
Yeah, I didn't watch. Yeah, I didn't watch it.
And it was a, and it was a small group, sorry, there's a...
I know there's a, I am shocked.
Yeah, I was going to see if I can, I'll pull up there.
I think people, I mean, again, the voters voted no in town, but I think people have strong opinions, yeah.
So did they, did they file?
For those at home, this is an article that, that states that we would basically not allow the sale of recreational marijuana in the town of Norfolk.
So one of the, one of the versions that the, that they were discussing on the state Capitol was, the referendum was such that the residents voted against it, the authority.
Mm-hmm, that's what we're doing here.
Which in this case is the board of selectmen.
Well, it, they changed it. That was the, that was the House's proposal.
It changed, it has to go to a town meeting.
The way it finally came out, it had to go to a town meeting.
Even though we're still a no town.
The original version authorized us to make that vote and then have it ratified, if you will, at a spring town, at a regular town meeting. And the final version took away us and brought it to a town meeting. And apparently the advisory board is in favor of selling recreational marijuana in the town of Norfolk. So that'll be an interesting debate.
We have, did we do a zone for, now, correct me, do we have a, have we already done, besides the more probation, do we have, have we already given, I feel like you, I'm on that, can you do better than I am? Have we already designated an area where it can only be sold anyways on the, on the recreational or no?
Nope, they can...
Right now?
Pick a vacant store in the center of town.
You're right, because the only thing we did was we, well, we had discussed the moratorium to make sure that we had something in place in town before.
So we don't even have a moratorium now?
Marijuana was legalized in terms of the retail establishments. So that's all we did, but it never actually made it to the warrant, right?
Correct.
Because we decided that it was enough time to get to the next...
It was on the advisory general who waited out, yeah.
Right, right.
Well, the new, you all, I think, know Kay Doyle, you know, who is our former town council.
She's a cannabis addict now.
Kay is now the lead council on this issue for the state. And I had a long conversation with her about this, about, you know, the pros and cons and what other communities around us are doing. And it's, it's a very, you know, the law is the law, whether we agree with it or not, it's the law. But we do have the ability to prevent the sale of the recre, not medicinal, but recreational use within the given town, if the town as a whole voted against it in the polls, which Norfolk did.
So if the town didn't, so yes towns have no choice if someone wants to come in?
Correct. That's my understanding of it.
I don't think it's that like that bad for that yes towns, so yes, you know, I mean, so you're not going to just open up, you know, again, when the state gets their regulations, I don't think.
And there are several neighboring towns around us that did vote yes.
There's a lot of money behind this, Joe.
Well, as she said, there are, we have one particular neighbor that shall remain nameless that is apparently very actively pursuing a number of different opportunities in that industry. So we're going to have it next door no matter what.
Yeah, they're going to make a lot of money.
I'm sure they will.
Because they get the host agreement.
Maybe, maybe it's just, I don't know, maybe it's just a generational thing with me, but I...
No, your generation probably loved it. I'm sure, look at Marion, Marion's a game. I live in Millis.
It terrifies me, the thought of having this being sold in town because you know it's going to get to the hands of kids. You know it is, and it just, that's just...
I mean, I think, I assume that, you make it easy, I mean, because like you said, because neighboring towns will have it.
They go to a neighboring town, I mean, you know, so be it. I mean, but, I don't know.
Well, I guess what troubles me is, you know, at the end of the day, the will of the people is what it is, but, you know, particularly a fall meeting like this, I'm not sure that there's going to be very many people at the meeting. So that's what troubles me. I mean, I, you know, I have my own opinion, I'm pretty much in agreement with you, but I'm just concerned that we're not going to get a large turnout.
It'll be what it'll be.
This may go the other way here, so.
Marijuana, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I am just shocked at the advisory board.
Yeah, there was on, one part of the discussion that I heard was...
You have to watch the meeting, I have to watch it.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to YouTube, but I want, I want to hear that debate.
They talked about hypocri, you know, more people die from cigarettes and it's hypocritical that we didn't pay up.
It's not the issue. It's, that's ridiculous.
I'd be shocked if we can't get it to pass.
I mean, that's, that's a ridiculous argument.
What's that?
Well, people use, unfortunately, you know, the voters tend to, you know, put a lot of stock and faith, as they should, in the advisory board regulations. It depends how crowded the meeting is, actually, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to make a bet on either side of which way it goes.
Yeah.
I was asking when you let, so we, but we can't, we can't then, if it goes, if it doesn't, we don't prepare, as Jim said, any open storefront right now, other than some laws in there about how close to schools, I believe, and stuff like that.
No, it's not until like December of 2019 that they can actually go forward.
But if, if they get...
It's a concern if they file an application.
If they file an application, they're in, unless we have this on the books.
Anywhere though, I mean, so we can't, I mean, again, I'm trying to ask, can we zone, just like we did with adult entertainment, can it not be zoned?
No, so we, we also have a zoning article to put out in the spring. So this is the general, so the, there's, you know, this is just a, I don't know, the state, bang my head against the wall for the state again. This is a situation where the, the legislation doesn't, it just says bylaw, so it's not clear whether it should be a general bylaw or a zoning bylaw. So the advice from town council is that, in their experience, is that some towns are doing general bylaws, some towns are doing zoning bylaws, and some towns are doing both. The attorney general has approved both. Now, nobody, now, obviously, there's been no...
Sure, there are challenges.
There's been no challenges to those, so we don't know which one's going to work better. But Dave said, why don't you just do both? And so we're going to do this one now, and, you know, which is a, which is a majority threshold. And then we'll come back with a, if that passes, then we'll come back with a zoning board article in the spring, which would have a two-thirds.
Yeah, but my question was...
That's going to be a fun discussion.
My question was not, you know, not to do both those things, but can it be zoned to a specific area or no? That's what I'm asking. Other than that, there's some regulations states they can't be right next to a school, but other than that, can I, because there's some, you know, can I literally open it?
I think, well, no, well, you can, you can...
Zone it?
You can zone it out, which is different than the adult entertainment bylaw that, you had to zone it to a particular location.
Right.
This you can zone out.
No, I'm sorry, I asked, so it's either in or out, there's no, there's no particular location, so...
No, I think you could zone it to a small area too, if you, I mean, I, that seems to be more...
Like you're trying to appease people, like if people want to have Norfolk sell marijuana, I don't like, well, again, still the kids could get it or whatever, maybe I don't want to make it so easy that they can sell it right at Linda's Variety. I mean, I want it, they have to sell it down, like you said, wherever our area...
You can't zone it in an area where they can't build.
Okay, I get it.
You can't, you can't zone it to a, you know, a swamp and say, you know, that's prohibited.
You know, I'm just, I don't want to say, like you said, it's not even a good solution because if it's in the town, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean, it could be the next door town anyways.
It's, it's, it's a tough debate because you know it's going to be in your neighbors. Your neighbors are going to have it. And, and so it isn't that you're preventing it, I, I don't know, I just, I just, again, the town voted quite overwhelmingly against, you know, the use of recreational marijuana. I mean, that was the will of the community. And to me then, it reflected the will of the voters, and the voters said we don't want it. So I, I would reinforce that. I mean, my own personal bias is I don't want that sold in Norfolk, but that's my own personal bias. The will of the voters rule, and they, they voted.
So now the voters are going to get kind of undermined, unless they all decide to come out to town, as they should, right? So they're going to get, they're going to get undermined even though everybody knows.
That's why I'm surprised, you know, when I said there's a lot of money behind this, the fact that now this has to go back, another bite at the apple when the town already voted against it. I just, I just think that's an indication of the amount of money and lobbying and so much that's going on behind this. And I, that makes me very angry.
Well, you guys remember when Richard Ross came in here? Remember that? And how he'd gone out to Colorado and several other legislators and viewed it, I mean, his stories were frightening.
Yeah.
Frightening. So I just, I don't know. I mean, we're not going to stop it in the state, but I just, whoop, let's see where it goes.
Well, then, article 15 is sell old town hall. We're doing that, right?
Now, you're going to present the, the parcelling out of that property?
Yep, I have that on a big, you know, whatever that, 24 by 36.
Okay. And you got your charter committee on there?
Yeah, I mean, I highlighted that because Dave and I haven't had time to work on that. I don't know if you want to put that off till the spring, if we're going to open up the, and add those last two. It's up to you. I mean, I know I was pushing it.
What, L2 now? I'm sorry, Jack, you got me confused. What's new?
16.
No, 16 is new or we already have?
No, 16's not new, but 16 is, Dave, Dave still needs to...
Right, do you need more time? I don't care, I mean, I'm up to...
I'd be open to tabling that.
I would very much be open to tabling this.
Why don't we table that?
Dave's had enough work to do, you know.
Yeah, I got enough stuff to do.
Well, when you say table, do we, are we saying we're going to IP it or are we going to take it off the warrant?
I would, I mean, if we're going to open the warrant to add those number...
And I would suggest we take it off.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I think I numbered, I numbered.
I agree.
I didn't change the last number, so we actually have 19.
I mean, if Dave wants to work on it and something, first, this to me is something that should go to a spring meeting anyway.
Yeah, I agree. To see if the town will vote, this is still, we're trying to negotiate a price now. So this is, this is the property that you guys have all...
In the corner?
Yeah, okay. And then the last two, 18 and what should be 19, I wrote 17 again for some reason. 18 is that house on Priscilla Ave that was built in the nine, back in the 90s on a piece of property that is actually a town-owned property.
Yeah, I remember that.
Goes back all the way to Coleman and Page, and they tried to resolve it, and then we put it in the owner's court to have them try and figure it out. And when Dave came on board, we had him look at it. And the only, the only real solution is to do home rule legislation so you can, you know, because, because we need to sell them a piece of property. And I can tell you that it's, right now, we're between 50 and 72,000 dollars. It's a little tiny lot. We have it, we believe it's, we believe the value is at 72,000. They're arguing that they think it's worth 50,000. So we would sell them that lot for, for somewhere between that amount of money. Obviously, we don't want to go out and have an auction and sell it off because somebody else could buy it and then, you know, they own it.
Live in half their house.
Yeah, live in half their house. So this goes through home rule reg, home rule legislation, which allows us to avoid procurement laws, chapter 30B, and we just get to sell it directly to them.
Okay.
It's been done in other towns and...
So they never were able to sell that property? Because if I recall, even, it moved out, out of the house already, didn't it?
They were, they, yeah, a sale did fall through. They were trying to sell it, and this was three or four years ago, maybe three. They were trying to sell it, and then the deal fell through because they couldn't get clear title. That's when this whole thing came up.
I remember.
We tried to help, but we didn't want to help at our, not at our expense, but it was a very messy thing.
I remember.
Now they've been renting it, yeah. Yeah, Jeff...
And then the driveway on Liberty Lane.
Yeah, and Dave's going to work on that one tomorrow with me, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, will you entertain an article, a motion to open the warrant?
I will, I'll give a second.
Second.
All right, all is in favor?
Aye.
The warrant has been opened?
I move to remove article 16 as noted in this draft and to add articles 18 and 19.
17, uh, 18, yes.
Just 18 and 19, isn't it?
Yeah, but, and I think just, we need to delete the one that's, it's not numbered, the one between 12 and 13, it's the housing...
Oh, okay. So let me rephrase that motion, Marion, if I may. I move to remove the article submitted by the municipal affordable housing trust and to delete article 16, which is referencing town charter, and to add article 18, which is the land on Priscilla Avenue, and article 17, which is an interesting way to number this, Jack.
Yes.
Should we call that 19 for the sake of something else?
We should, yeah.
Okay. Which references the Liberty Lane.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I, anything else on the warrant check?
Just if you want to reorder it, you need to reorder it.
Do you entertain another motion?
Uh, yes.
I move to close the warrant.
Oh, nice job.
I thought, well, we never called that, I didn't thank you personally. Second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Marion would have caught you on that.
Jimmy Garoppolo's been traded.
That's an experienced clerk you have there.
Our backup quarterback's been traded.
Who?
Sorry, Jimmy Garoppolo.
Come on!
Sorry, I didn't mean, sorry, folks, thanks to my son's text, yeah, I shouldn't, yep.
I can get ESPN up on the border, 13 seconds.
Are you serious?
That's what I'm getting as a text.
Surprise.
For what?
I don't know, yeah, we're in the middle of meetings, I won't indulge that, but, I'll wait, I'll wait by his side if he's listening.
We better have a...
Okay.
We don't want another quarterback, I mean, we got one, but...
Does it have a number?
Do we have a backup now?
We had one, he's playing for Indianapolis, I think.
Oh, my God.
I'm out.
Sorry about that, folks, if you're disturbed by that, but...
Well, they're probably, they're probably going on the internet right now to find out what happened too.
Details to come.
Our three viewers just left.
Details to follow when my, my son walks in.
All right. Sorry about that.
Do you want to read numbers, is that what you said, Jack? Do, hey, folks, you guys want to read numbers?
I'm okay with the numbers.
No, yeah, they seem fine.
I think the only one that, you know, and maybe you've already thought about it, is just the stretch code, if you wanted to, if you wanted to strategically put that someplace, either in the beginning or the front or...
Kind of in the middle, 13, I mean...
It's such a short warrant anyway, I don't think it matters too much.
I don't think so, I, again, I don't want to bother, no, I'm just trying to read numbers, yeah. If I would, that's fine.
Okay. Oh, sorry, back to me.
Public safety building?
Where to start?
All right, we traded, it's been traded, Garoppolo's been traded for a second round pick next year from the 49ers who are currently 0-9, so second, it could be a high second round pick, but I don't know our backup, I can't answer all that question. That's from my ESPN source.
Not happy.
I hope he stands for the national anthem.
I hope Tom Brady stays healthy, that's...
We don't have a backup.
That's what I mean. We had Brissette.
Yeah, we gave away to Indianapolis, they did well, yeah. Yeah, we don't, yeah. But you can find it.
And he's playing, he's doing pretty well.
Well, he's playing.
He's been, okay, for, he's been struggling anyways, okay. We'll get more details, we'll update everyone on that maybe next town meeting.
There's got to be more shoes to drop here.
So the public safety building, I'll tell you the, I guess, the good, the good news. So we did hire a temporary employee to start doing some of the site work. So a Norfolk resident, actually, I haven't met him yet, Paul Knowles. He's done a lot of site work throughout his career. We leased, we rented an excavator off of the state bid list, so we got a good price for that. And he's already, he's been down there for all last week and this week, and from everything I've heard, making great progress, working on the, we're putting in a, kind of a road behind the property, it'll be the driveway into the Sallyport. So he's working on that when he's not doing something more pressing, you know, getting utilities into the building or doing something, you know, in the, on the actual core of the site. So that has been, I think that's, we're making some progress now in trying to, we had to have some time and materials work done by the contractor to do some of the site work. That was the responsibility of the owner. And we're, so now we're able to not have to rely on time and materials anymore, and we've got kind of a fixed cost with Mr. Knowles doing that work. So I think that's good progress. We're having, we're having some growing pains, I guess, for, to be kind, with the project manager, as we've gone through a couple of different reps with them. Meeting, there's a site meeting tomorrow at 2:00 and then a building committee meeting at 4:00 to talk about how that progress is going. I would like to see, from my point of view, I'd like to see the project manager doing more. I mean, I think what, what we're getting out of them right now is a clerk, so somebody who is reporting to us what is happening at the site every day. What we're not getting is management, is helping to resolve problems.
Proactive, proactive.
Helping to work with, you know, between the architect and the, and the general contractor to make sure, you know, we've had a lot of different issues with ledge and getting utilities into the building and making sure, you know, our guys have raised questions about, you know, there's an existing two-inch water line, but the architect has a four-inch water line called for, and it's, that's for domestic water use, and it's, that's for domestic water use, and we don't, we, we don't, we're gonna have to put it down to a two-inch water, two-inch meter anyway, so why, what's the purpose of having a four-inch water line going in? Project manager isn't helping us, you know, kind of work with the architect to resolve that, so, so argue.
Is it because the project manager's not familiar with that project, or is it because he or she is not as qualified as a, as a project manager?
I mean, if you go, so...
That's a difficult thing to answer.
I'm not answering that. I'm just saying, I don't mean to be wise, I'm just asking, you know, I mean, is it because we didn't get the right...
We must have a feel for whether he's got the experience from his prior work, right? I mean, to...
I mean, I think that the two guys that are representing CDR right now, both are, they both have a lot of experience. But I just don't think they have project management experience as much as, or, or don't have the ability to, to give us the time for project management experience. We're not getting the, and what I mean by that is just the project management. If you, like, I reached out to Tony DeLuzio, who was the original guy that we hired from CDR, from Maguire, it was Maguire Group at the time, now it's CDR Maguire. Tony left CDR as, you know, unfortunately, a lot of people left, they had a lot of turnover, and he is now with a Worcester firm, ends with a C, I can't remember the name right now, but if you, if you look at their website, Tony's being interviewed by Tim Murray, who's, you know, the Worcester, uh, business park developer, or, you know, he's working with the, the business community. And he's interviewing Tony, and Tony's talking about project management and how, what, you know, what their firm does for services, and they represent, you know, municipalities and other municipal government entities on their projects, and they, they do the work for, you know, town administrators and whatever, superintendents of schools, you know, people who have full-time jobs who...
Right.
Don't have experience managing projects. And that's what, that's what we hired when we hired the Maguire Group, and then we are clearly not getting that out of them today.
Again, simple business one-on-one, fire them.
So I, we...
That's gonna be on the table.
So I think that's, that's a discussion for tomorrow.
I always yell at you, but it's like, it's too, it wouldn't go.
And I think, and I've talked to Dave, I think, you know, that'll...
Do we have to bid out to get another one? Is that what's going to happen?
We do, and we can do it in about three weeks.
And there may be some short-term solutions to help us weather those three weeks as well, so.
I don't mean to be so, like, I'm not involved in it, but it just sounds, you can't be paid for in this world. I know it's public.
That is frustrating.
Jack is being a whole lot more kind than I would have thought.
No, he, he, he...
They've been terrible.
Right.
Does he not have the leadership skills? I mean, he just...
They, they...
Communication skills?
Well, their first person, their first person they ended up firing...
Yeah.
Uh, and he caused major problems.
Yep.
Major problems. And these new folks are just not doing the job. I guess that's about the kind of...
I literally think they're taking notes, uh, you know...
You know, they can take the same notes.
Well, they're taking notes at the job site, you know, about what's going on. Yeah, well, absolutely could. And then, but, and then they take notes of our meetings, and then they, they follow it up with Sue Jacobson and get copies of minute, you know, because they, because they don't do an effective job taking, I mean, they can't even take notes of the meetings very well, so.
Have you communicated with their bosses that weren't happy? Have they noticed?
This is the boss.
This is the boss.
This is the boss.
The guy that's, so the guy that, that, one guy that's with us is, is the Northeast boss, and he's, um, he stepped in after he, he fired the last guy. And then he brought in a new clerk, who is just, you know, nice guy, I think he knows a lot about construction, but, but can't...
Project manager.
Can't project manage.
Don't, don't shake your card then, just, I mean, move on. I mean, it may not have been that easy.
So we gotta get the building committee tomorrow to vote to...
I mean, legally, I mean, what, what can we, can we do aside from influence...
I have a vote, I have an exercise.
The person in that position. I mean, can we take more significant action against Maguire? If they're just frustrating, if they can put somebody in the chair that can do the job. Maybe this guy's boss needs to do it then, for a while. I mean, that's what happens in private industry.
The next labor...
That's what happens in private industry. Somebody's got to figure it out.
Yeah, no, and, I mean, he wrote us a letter, so we've been, we, at the last business meeting, two, actually, two business meetings ago, Jim, Jim kind of read him the riot act and said, you know, you gotta come up with a plan of action to get us back on course. The night before the last, the, so two weeks ago, when, last time we had a meeting, the night before, we got a response from him, and it said, this is what we're gonna do to get us back on course.
Wrote me a nice two-page letter, identifying all the issues.
And now since then, none of that has happened, so...
And none of that's happened.
So that's why I think we're at the point...
Why don't you tell him, you know, we're not happy short of his boss doing the job?
But his boss is doing the job.
Well, then...
The next guy above him is Matt Amarello.
So his boss can't handle the job.
From the big day?
That's the guy.
You want him, you don't want him doing it?
I don't think such things are...
They're nice people. This isn't...
No, it's not, it's not personal, it's business.
But Jack is right. I, I was probably the one that was most outspoken in the meeting. He, he just, you're just not doing what they're supposed to do. Period. Just let it go at that. And, and I gave him, I asked him to specifically outline...
You're very good about that.
Open issues. I, I want detail. I want to know exactly what's outstanding and what you're gonna do to correct it. We knew, we know what the issues are. I mean, they were many. What are you gonna do to fix them? He wrote this letter, page and a half long, saying, here's what we're gonna do. I advised, it was, you know, nothing.
It's easier to write a letter. But you could just tell him that you've got a unified board of selectmen that's losing patience right now.
Well, also, we look back in front of the other towns. Only, this is our project, but we're supporting it. I mean, we're, we're going, we're talking about credibility with KP budget. If I was the other towns, I'd be, again, I'm not trying to put words. I'd be a little nervous.
We've been, we've been very firm on him. I mean, it's, he's had no free ride on this, and, and he just hasn't, we've given him opportunity to, I think, catch up, um...
Yeah, you have to give him some. I know he's changed.
The last, the last billing was the last straw for me.
Yeah.
I don't know how you feel, but, um, you know, they basically, he brought in a new guy, but apparently he felt he had to be here to mentor this new guy into the project. He charges us for two guys. No way. Not gonna happen.
How is this playing with the other communities, the rec portion of it?
Um, they're having some of the same issues, not, but their, but their project really isn't, uh, isn't underway as much because, you know, their, their, their phase will be the second floor.
It's truly our problem right now.
They, they, the one area where they've had a lot of frustration is the, uh, is the tower, because they got some bad advice, like we did. You know, they got advi, the advice is, we took some of the, uh, components out of the project, so it wasn't part of the general contractor bid, and we were gonna either bid them separately or buy stuff off the state bid list, or in the case of the site work, we were gonna have the DBW do the work with our contractors. And we all, we couldn't, once we dug down into that after the fact, we realized we couldn't do that.
We were ill-advised.
Yep. Um, so, you know, fortunately with the site work, I think we've come up with a creative solution to solve that. But the tower is, uh, is the max problem.
And the stairway is still a mystery to me.
The stairway is still a mystery.
I, I just, that's, that's almost becoming funny.
More, more.
There's not gonna be any stairs. There's no stairs.
That's hilarious, of course.
So, so Jim, I mean, do you think it's worth, you know, having the, the board participate in, you know, one of the meetings? You know, do a joint meeting or something? Has it gotten to that point?
I don't think there's, no, I don't know that it would make a difference, Jeff. Thank you for that. I, I know we had to do that on the schools.
I know people are trying hard, but, I mean, you get somebody like Maguire that's dropping, you know, they're not holding up there.
I think the board is gonna be fairly uniform in their view of the project manager tomorrow. I don't think, this isn't gonna be a hard debate.
George Cronin.
Uh, George Cronin, uh, Mike, uh...
Mike Judasey.
Mike Judasey, Cole, Chuck.
Is your board member, Jeff?
Uh, Matt, Matt is on it.
Yeah, who myself.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a difficult one.
You got a lot of good people on that board, man.
It's, they have, they have been less than adequate.
Uh, I think the contractor's still doing a great job. He's, he's, you know, he's a...
He's a character.
He's a character, and he's, he likes to arm wrestle, but, um, he did the Foxborough Town Hall, and I still think that's...
He's actually a likable character.
Outstanding project, yeah.
We'll get, we'll get it, we'll get it fixed.
The run-and-gun license, I know Jim threw out a, kind of a straw man, and then, and I know Scott also had a long conversation with Mr. Brogan today, so I don't know if...
Oh, you did?
The two of you can...
I did, yep.
Might want to compare notes.
Yeah, that was kind enough, yeah. Far, we, Jack had mentioned, um, that, you know, that we put together, um, for you, you know, um, clarification or, um, specify what the penalties are for violating a license. He seemed to be kind of surprised by that. I said, he was like, no warning. I said, no, you've already, you've already been warned. I mean, I said, this is just going forward, Mike. I said, we need to have something in place because the residents are concerned that, you know, you don't go after hours. I said, you know, ideally, you know, no matter what the dollar amount is, whether it is, my thought to him was, you know, you're telling me now you're not gonna violate the terms anyways? So who cares what this says?
This shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, this should not be a problem, you know. Uh, I mean, he, you know, he, he also expressed concerns, which is valid, and I think, you know, Jack's looking at, you know, fair treatment around town. I mean, he brought up, I mean, I assume it's okay to say, you know, why is he, I don't wanna say singled out, but like, for instance, you know, is it entertainment when, and again, nice people, they give it up when the Lions Club hosts a community event. That's entertainment. The Lions Club charges five dollars a car to park. They're not governed right now under entertainment. That's not fair, right? In my mind, I don't know. And again, he didn't really want to open up a can of worms at the Hunter Train Ride. What time does that go to? Again, land donated by very nice people, and again, the money goes to the community, right? But they're charging for an event. Are they not? I mean, you know...
I think, you know...
I think we can resolve that quickly if we just, and we can probably waive the fee. I mean, it's a municipal, community event, non, not-profit, not-for-profit, so we could, I mean, it's only twenty-five...
The property owners are not gaining anything financially on those projects. They're donating.
Right, he, he just, I'm not, I'm not, I have a pine, you know, if Dave's looking really at it, so I just looked, you know, I, you know, you always said, both the guys always, I just want to apply it equal. I know we have, again, and I told Mike, I said, unfortunately, this is the worst situation for us, continues, neighbor versus neighbor. I said, we did, I said, we're gonna go away from this, but no one's gonna like us, and people are gonna like us less and less, and both parties are gonna, you know, wanna throw stones at us.
You're in the middle of a rock fight.
Um, and, you know, but, you know, and, you know, he talked to you, and he said, Jane and Paul, same thing, you know, they do hayrides, and they have an event, you know, and that goes to benefit their business, you know?
Yeah, I, I struggle with that one, because I don't see that as a, you know, like, like today, people wrote us a number of times about, uh, about the tack sale, garage sale, yard sale, whatever they call, you know. And I responded to a bunch of different people saying that, you know, and Jim did as well, to one of them, you know, it's not an event. And even though, you know, there was some question about charging for table, which isn't really charging admission, but, um, the fact that there wasn't an event, you know, a public show, anything like that, I didn't think, I don't think that event that they held at Montseconk qualified for a, a event, uh...
The way we read it, entertainment.
Entertainment, an entertainment license. I don't, you know, I've been thinking about, because Mr. Brogan's been talking about the, um, you know, not to throw them under the, under the bus, but he said, just to be fair, you know, shouldn't we look at the hayrides? I don't really think, I don't, I still don't think that's a show or an event, you know, I mean, it's, it's a...
No, I don't either.
I do think the Hunter Train Ride, I think we could, we could do a one-day event license for that. Not a big deal at all. I would recommend that we waive the fee, and I don't think you're gonna get, you know, any neighbors complaining about the event.
No, I don't think so. Yeah, I just try to be, again, we're held to a standard, or we're trying to be impartial and fair, and, you know, mitigate concerns of, you know, a legitimate businessman with an agricultural business venture. At the same time, people have rights to privacy, quiet, you know, as best we can. And again, I don't have a need to...
There is, I agree. I mean, I think we're all on the same page in terms of being equitable, in terms of how we apply this. But I, I don't know that the circumstances are all the same.
No, no, they're all different.
And, you know, you, you have the, Community Day is a one-day event. I don't know whether that property is sixty-one A property or not. I suspect not, where it's actually held.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of it is, but maybe not that part, yeah.
Yeah, I know some of it is, but I, I think that particular parcel is not sixty-one A property.
So therefore, you say, it's like private, so what you're doing, you're private.
It's a private home. You know, it's private property. And, you know, he's donating his property for the use. I, I don't know. I'm not trying to justify one versus another, but I, I don't think it's as black and white as, as...
No, I'm not trying to...
As Brogan may be trying to make it. I don't think it's that simple.
No, I didn't try, it was just brought up as a point. I mean, again, I had never really considered it, and again, I think everyone's equal under the law in a sense. You know, if, if you are truly doing it, and Jack, I'm not sure where I stand on the hayride, Jack. Again, this is getting us deeper and deeper into split hairs. But I'm just saying, I just wanted to be, if we apply it, we try to apply it.
Right, and I just think, I mean, I think, you know, one way of solving those types of arguments is to just, we could have those license, you know, we could ask Jane and Pauls to apply.
We do event licenses for people that want to hold neighborhood parties.
Yep.
We just did one for the Grange, uh, to a certain, you know, liquor license. But we've given permission for the use of those kinds of facilities on a one-day basis many times. So I mean, maybe that's, it's, maybe it's as simplistic as that.
What troubles me is, is that the situation continues to evolve. So, you know, we asked Mr. Brogan for, you know, a list of the types of things that might happen, you know, at the property. You know, we're trying to get ahead of this so that we can put things in place, so that, you know, we can protect, you know, abutters from certain things. Other things may not be so much protection, but at least there's an awareness in terms of what is gonna happen there. So, you know, I think, you know, some of the retail stuff now, it's just something else now, and I'm sure the way the abutters feel is, okay, you know, it was, you know, the rioting and the shooting, and that's pretty much what those conversations were all, all about. And then now we have the miniature horse shows, and now we have, you know, retail-type activities. So, so maybe it's not so much the activity, but we, we want to get in front of this, and he needs to help us do that.
Well, let me, let me just ask you a question then, Jeff. So why are we not in front of Jane and Pauls when they sell you an apple? Is that a retail business?
Maybe it has to do with the physical proximity of abutters and such.
It's not a, that's not a event. Why, why is that a...
No, it's a, well, Jeff wants, I think, when I hear from, you know, again, I, I think...
Oh, you're comparing the retail?
Yeah, because that, I don't, don't get the retail. It's a farm business engaging its farm activity, which is to sell tack, which is to sell license to stud your horse, which is to sell old horses, sell new horses, sell belt buckles, to sell hats. That's the, you know, you're saying he should, we have to know about that to get in front of that, then I want to know about everything Jane Paul does. The day they sell, when they, when they switch from blueberries to strawberries, from strawberries to apples.
Well, I hear what you're saying, Scott, but the situation is quite different where Mr. Brogan put that, that property, put his, you know, business enterprise in the middle of a neighborhood.
It was always there. It was always a farm.
Jane and Pauls didn't, Jane and Pauls didn't do that. Let's be fair about this.
Not, not put. He had, it's always been a, you can't take that away, farm, you know...
So you mean, you saw the development that's taken place there, and there's, there's a barn, there's significant, that property's changed dramatically.
Right, but it was still, it was been under sixty, it's been a farm-like type business forever with acreage. I mean, I mean, you know, I think, you gotta look at this way, I mean, because we're running out of land, farms are being swallowed up by developments, everything, so as soon as then, so as soon as houses go around Jane and Pauls, and you're saying no more strawberry sales, no more pumpkin sales, no more nothing, if a development, if it encompasses Jane and Pauls?
No, but at least those folks, when they buy their homes, they at least have some idea...
Yeah.
What's happening. Those folks had homes there, and this gentleman went ahead...
And built everything.
And developed that property and developed a business, okay, and they're in close proximity, and I'm, so I am more sympathetic in that situation. Me personally.
I mean, sympathy is fine. I get, I just think it's governed by sixty-one A, sixty-one B.
That's the perspective I took to the planning boards, Scott. This is more different.
I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm sympathetic, too. Like you said, I mean, you, you, you just grew up around you, but it's still been, you know, a kind of agriculture, even if it wasn't zoned, I mean, zoned agricultural, under the agricultural...
But I, I'm tempted just to stay out of the conversation.
I tried to back up.
Yeah, uh, but I, I think that, I think we're clouding it. I, I think there are clear distinctions here. And I learn more about sixty-one A and sixty-one B than I ever wanted to. They have a right, Jane Paul's farm has a right to sell their vegetables, to sell their corn. They don't need a license to do that.
Right.
And if they want to have an entertaining hayride, or they want to have clowns there, they have a right to do that. The same thing would be Mr. Brogan. If Mr. Brogan wants to raise horses, he wants to sell horses, he wants to board horses, he wants to train horses, he wants, you know, he has a right to do that. What I think creates the distinction here is that he is advertising in a broadly-based event that people come from all over to attend. Like, I'm gonna use the term rodeo, because I don't know much about this stuff, so I'm just using that as sort of a generic term. That's the, that's the issue that we're trying to work our way through. If, if, we have tons of property all over Norfolk that's sixty-one A property, hundreds, literally hundreds of parcels that's sixty-one A. We have a number of them, one right next to the school over here that has horses and raises horses and boards horses, and that's a business. They're running a business. They're boarding horses. You know, they have a right to do that under sixty-one A. It's in the law.
Right.
It's in the law.
Because they're gonna create an event, right?
So we're, I think what we're trying to work our way through is what is outside of the realm of what is clearly defined within the law. I think what Jane and Paul is doing is clearly defined in the law.
I agree.
I, I don't, there's no discussion about that. Clearly defined. The events that Mr. Brogan is holding, I think, are a little bit unclear, and, and I think you called it agro-entertainment. There, there's a whole new universe of definitions associated with this type of activity that we're all starting to learn about. What Jane and Paul's doing is business as usual in Massachusetts for hundreds of years. I hope it stays.
Yeah, and I think, as do I.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the, the, you know, I was kind of taking away a little bit from all of you, but, you know, I think the impact on each of those types of activities is, is the, is the underlying issue, you know.
I agree.
And I, because like a hayride, to me, you know, a family shows up, they go for a hayride, they, you know, family goes away. It's not, it's not, it's not thirty cars showing up at once and for an event, and I realize some of the, some of the scale is not thirty cars, and sometimes it's only five cars.
It's a slight day to me.
But I, but I do think the, you know, I think, I personally want to look at the, not that I'm trying to stop it by any stretch of the imagination, but just, we should issue a license with some parameters for, for Community Day and for the Hunter Train Ride, because I think those are events that, that do have impacts, and it's a, you know, just, um, not that there are any bad impacts that I've ever heard of, because I think every, it's, they've been around for so long.
I mean, to be consistent, that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I don't think anyone have a problem with that.
And I can, and I, but I...
Because they're, you know, it's a one-day event. They're not gonna be restrictive. Just tell us what you're doing, and we'll approve it and get it done. This is different. This is a growing business, and, and he has rights under sixty-one A and sixty-one B. He's sixty-one B now, I guess. So he has rights, and we have to protect those rights. I think the fact that he held a, basically in my view, a yard sale, all intents and purposes, he has, he has a right to do that. He has a right to sell equipment and do things of that nature. That's not, to me, an entertainment event. That, to me, is very different.
Well, I think the fact that there's a fee for a table and such, I think it's more than just a yard sale. I mean, you're basically inviting a bunch of other folks who probably don't live in Norfolk to come here and sell, sell goods on his property. So, I mean, it's a distinction. I'm not suggesting that I'm too far from where you are, but that's a distinction, that you've got other people who are in there selling their goods. It's not his, all his materials being sold.
But didn't you, but didn't you just quote, I mean, what you quoted back when you responded? Did you read what they, what an entertainment license is supposed to cover, and Jack's replied emails to the folks tonight?
I don't know, when did that? I read a few emails.
Well, no, Jack. The bit about, you know, I mean, what an...
No, I was in my car.
You know. And by the way, it was one person paid ten dollars, so Mike will solve that issue anyways, he's not gonna charge anymore. Still gonna have people come in and sell stuff, he's not gonna charge ten dollars for a table. Get one person come, in two days. I mean, again, he's, well, to mitigate things, he's gonna go the route of not charging, meaning then we're gonna have less and less control, is where he's gonna go. So, I mean, that, that's what we want.
In essence, it is a yard sale.
Yeah.
When he does that.
Yeah.
I mean, we have yard sales all over town. And by the way, multi-families.
Yeah, sometimes we have neighborhood yard sales.
This is like the essence of what an entertainment license is.
You know, I just...
Yeah, from our, yeah.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think any of us had a vision for what he planned to do with this property. And we could, somebody say, could say it's not our business, but you know what? If he starts having flea markets there every weekend, and you have hundreds of people going, that's not gonna be a good situation.
I agree.
And I'm not sure that we're too far removed from that.
I, I, you and I are on the same page. I don't know what this is gonna grow into. I don't know where it's gonna go, Jeff. And I have concerns about that. I just, and I don't know that he knows. Or if he knows, he's not shared it. Matter of fact, did he share it with you today?
You know, again, it's not, you know, he wants it to go up there for sure, I mean, it's not his primary income now, but ten years from now, you know, he wants it to build, you know, something that he can think about retiring on, you know.
I don't know, I don't know what the answer is to this.
I mean, he, you know, he, you know, again, it's because, and I get it, because of the proximity, and it's different because it's not commercial, and, you know, again, and I don't know if he's correct or incorrect, it, you know.
No, but I see, I...
Well, no, I mean, about, when we issue other entertainment licenses, again, I think it's because they're in the right, again, I don't wanna say the right district, but, because he is a zone, but for his, his use, he's zoned that way. But, you know, again, his point, you know, the Silas, the, you know, the...
Eagle Brook.
Eagle Brooks. We don't, we, we issue the entertainment license with no restriction on dates, just saying, you know, you have certain times, you know, yes, you can't play music after three o'clock. And we don't govern their business by saying, you can only have it on, you know, the eighteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first.
But it's in a commercial district.
Right. But he's in, he's in agricultural district, he's agricultural, I'm just saying.
He's in a residential district.
But on an exemption property. See, I'm not saying I buy that or look at that, but, and I, I know Jeff's point too, because the neighbors then get screwed. But if you look at it just in a myopic view, which we can't, he's, you know, he's doing what he does in a, in a property zone district for his business, you know. Property zone for his property, you know, what he's doing, in a, in a bad area.
Well, the law, the law allows him to conduct the business that he's conducting in, in a residential area. But to Jeff's point, and I, and this is where I absolutely see the point of the neighbors, is that, you know, they bought their homes, and this wasn't there. It wasn't there.
Yeah.
Okay? So they, they bought their, now, you, you can't control it, you know, I mean, you, you don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, how many times have we heard, "My gosh, you can't build a house on that lot. I was told by my Realtor there'd never be a house there." Well, yeah, there's a house there, you know? I mean, I'm not, that's life, if you will, you know? But you do expect that it'll be a house. You don't expect that it'll be a business. And, you know, the law, unfortunately, you know, or fortunately, I'm not taking sides on it, but, you know, the law allows this agro-entertainment...
Agro-entertainment.
Whatever it is, to take place in a residential area. But I do very much sympathize with the neighbors, that, you know, this wasn't there when they bought that home. And there was no expectation that they were gonna have this type of, of activity going on on a regular basis. And it is a regular basis, even though he's not charging, he's, you know, it's, he's said it to you, he's, he's growing a business, no question about it. He's growing a business into something that we don't know quite what it'll be. And, so I, you know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you deal with it. This is just one of those that I really don't have a good understanding about how to deal with this, because both sides are right. He has a legal right to do it, but in the same vein, I fully understand the neighbors. I mean, that wasn't there when they bought their home.
So, so at least this activity had something to do with riding and such, right? So, I mean, he was at least...
My understanding is he was selling used horse equipment.
Yeah, yeah, so...
And they're doing, just so people know, so basically, you don't say, you can, if you're welcome to send emails to us, he's doing it again next weekend. So it's out there, for, you know, before you're gonna get letters, he's gonna do the same thing, I think. Right, Jack, did you say that? It's coming up again this weekend. Because he also has the right to do the shooting clinics, right? You know, because that's part of his...
He does, he has a right to do it.
And by the way, he wanted people to know he's doing, you know, again, he's doing one on a Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Yes.
A big-time clinic, which is clinic, not an event of shooting.
But getting back to what I drafted on this, and the reason I drafted it, is that there is a part of this we can regulate, that we have clearly defined. And he needs to follow that. And if he follows it, there's no issue.
Right.
But he needs to follow it. And, and there were a couple of things that occurred in that meeting that were troubling to me, to be honest. I, I don't think we were accurately informed. I don't think we got all the information that we should have gotten around this. And secondly, we also, we all had a concern about holding events on a Saturday and a Sunday. Remember, we had that discussion? That we didn't want to see them on the same, you know, back-to-back days in a weekend, and that's what, in fact, what occurred here. So there, there are a bunch of things that, that, you know, I don't want to prevent him doing what he has a legal right to do, but if we get an agreement, and we have an understanding on any given calendar year as to what will take place, that needs to be what takes place. And I'm not gonna argue over whether it's a barrel race, or, you know, a pony show. I mean, to me, a pony show, or he described it as a dog show, I would think that's a fairly unobtrusive event. The real issue is the shoots.
Right.
I mean, those are the ones that are, I think, more offensive than the others. But there need to be consequences for not following the license.
I think we all agree, I think we agree with five.
And we didn't build in those consequences.
And we didn't articulate it to him, too. So I don't, not that, you know, I don't want to shock anyone, anyone. Now, now, what you proposed here is, is clear and consistent, you know, violates, like I said, you know, I told him, you know, you know, again, don't go past six o'clock, then it doesn't matter whether it's a dollar fine, or it's a hundred thousand dollar fine, you're not gonna pay it. You go after that, you're gonna pay it. And if you violate it more than one time, you know, you're gonna, you know, we're gonna cancel it, as stated here, I mean. You don't, he has five more events, I think, remaining this year anyways.
Just follow the agreement. That's all.
He only does two shoots, there's always gonna be two shoots. I mean, he had a different idea, you know. I mean, he, you know, his floaters, like you say, were either fine, because he, you know, you know, I mean, no circumstances would a floater be a shooting event, but, so we don't have that issue, one we need to notice, but it would be equine-related event, whether it's a miniature horse, a barrel race.
Right, I mean, that seemed to me a fair way to do it. That if it's, you know, leave it to the town, what this says is, leave it to the town administrator, he has to notify the town administrator, I think I said, seven days in advance of the event. And it needs to be an event, in your opinion, of something that is equivalent to what we've authorized as a barrel race. And, you know, that to me, I mean, even, even folks that were here that evening agreed that, you know, there isn't, certainly the event wasn't obtrusive, it's just, you know, was he authorized to have the event?
Right.
And so, you know, no, no one's trying to be punitive in this.
So this November fifth date, this is basically another one of these...
Barrel races, I think, isn't it?
Well, I mean, he has a date on here, so is he, is he basically using that for this retail activity that's gonna take place? I mean, so in his mind...
No, that's not to do with, there's those...
His yard sale is irrelevant to that license, is what he's saying.
Right, exactly. And I agree, but I mean, this is my...
And I agree with that as well.
I mean, you know, again, if it grows into a flea market, we have a problem, you know.
Well, I see the argument of the beard, that's what that's called. At what point does it become a flea market, as opposed to, you know, selling some...
Well, I, I think, I think to your point, Jeff, and you said, I didn't know, did he charge ten bucks or not charge ten bucks, but he said one person. I think to your point, that's when it becomes a different issue, is when he's inviting people to come in and sell their wares, and he's creating a business environment, and he's charging for that. That is an entirely different environment that I think we have a right to...
Do we agree on that?
That we have a right to, to get involved in. If he's holding a garage, you know, a yard sale, for which he's using his property for people who commit...
I agree, those are the two extremes.
We do that all over town.
I agree with you.
We do that all over town.
Those are the two extremes.
But things tend to grow, as you write, so, I mean, things, the world doesn't stay static.
I just don't want us to be surprised, and I think we should be proactive going into next year, and let him know that that is gonna be a real issue, that this thing grows to the point where it's viewed more as a flea market, rather than just, you know, selling used, you know, horse equipment.
Well, maybe, Scott, if you wanna chat with him, or Jack, chat with him again, maybe we need to make that clear, that we need a more accurate understanding. I mean, he can't forecast two, three, four years down the line, but we're dealing in a yearly event. We need a more accurate understanding of exactly what he plans to have take place during that calendar year. We don't want surprises. I, I think that's a very fair thing to ask, and so, you know, if you're gonna hold a, you know, a flea market, so be it.
Yeah, no, I agree, yeah. Okay. Okay. So are we, hmm? Good, what's that? Right, so are we, are we okay with sending this updated?
Well, if you guys, that's just a straw man that I wrote up. If you guys want to amend it, change it, feel free. I just wanted to put something to start the process. If you're okay with it, that's okay, too. If you want to change the numbers, or the amounts, or any of that, there's no pride of authorship here, it's a straw man.
I think we have to do what we have to, you know, what we promised to do, which is to, you know, hold them to the, the latter of the, you know.
Yep. Do you think this would be like an addendum to the license?
I, if, we, well, I think we'd have to vote it.
We're allowed to modify, right, Jack? We're at any time allowed to modify?
Well, we're clarifying.
Okay, we'll modify, yeah. Okay. Do I get a motion then?
Well, I mean, are you guys okay with the way it is?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. Yeah, I don't wanna rush you, if you want, you want to pause that?
Yeah, I think, you know, other than, other than how it's introduced to the license, I mean, it may need a little work. I mean, the document itself is fine, but, you know, I think we have to probably introduce it properly, so it's clear what it is, right? I mean, do we reissue the license with that attached, you know, as an addendum to the initial...
I think you can send an addendum, a certified...
I'm making it up as we go, but, yeah, I can ask Dave tomorrow, but I think, numbers, I mean, you got an exclamation point instead of a one, but other than that, just items one, two, and three.
It's all right. No, no, you had, your tooth, your jewel, that's just a jewel mark. It should be a one, but it's just, it's exclamation points.
Looks like a one to me.
It looks like close enough, you know.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the only, is the procedure in terms of how it's formed.
So as long as we capture these three bullet points as amendments to the addendums, I guess, to the, to his license, that's what you're looking for.
So we can, yeah, we can proceed.
You have a motion to approve?
You moved the motion forward?
Well, I, I gave the straw man, so I'll leave it to you to make the motion.
Motion to approve the addendum to the entertainment license of March twenty-first, twenty-seventeen. That addendum, you have a date on that, Jim?
Probably not. Just had an exclamation point.
Today, today, ten-thirty seventeen?
What's that?
As of today.
As of today, ten-thirty, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Paul is in favor?
Aye.
So, Jeff, here we go. We'll just look a while.
We'll get that, I'm sure.
Now, Marion asks us, yeah, we gotta take a boat on some snow, contract driver labor rates, but we have to reaffirm it since it wasn't on the agenda, right? But we need to get Bobby, okay?
Yeah. So you'd like to start advertising and get some people in? So that second sheet is really the important sheet, and it shows you, first column is our current rates, the second column shows you what he's trying to go up to, and then he's giving you some other towns for, other than Rentham, we've got some other towns there, so we're trying to be a little more competitive with some other towns. The other thing that...
As you say, we're still paying the lease, I don't advise you to get any people, but I guess, if you live nearby, it's close.
Well, he's, he's having a hard time getting people, and that's why he's looking to go up. But what he, what he is gonna do in order to try and save some money is, right now, we pay an hour travel time for people to come in, so once we call them and tell them to come in, we give them an hour travel time as part of their pay. The guys don't really even seem to, contractors don't even seem to care about that so much as they want to know what their hourly rate is. I mean, and, you know, it's, it is, it is, they are, they are gonna be...
They could be up to eight, they could be up to eight hours, so one hour pay, you know, at eighty, at a better rate of eighty bucks is, you know.
Yeah, so in a small storm, they're actually gonna do better under the old system, but under the new rules, a longer storm, they'll do better under the new system.
Well, based on, on what he's showing here for the competitive rates, I'm surprised he's been able to get anybody to do it.
Well, I think he's really, he's really struggling.
We got those, because we got, authorized rates to go up, like I said, I, I know we're a nice town, but maybe we're not still paying enough. I don't know if Bob's shorthanded, we gotta pay, I mean, hate it, I wish there was no snow, we have to pay, we have to pay.
I'm gonna buy a four-by-four pickup, just in case.
Some of the numbers line up okay. Some of them line up okay, right?
They do? I couldn't see very many call, I mean, I just look at, I just started with a four-by-four, I mean...
We were at the bottom.
I mean, not, it's not off, Jeff.
Not at the top, but we're not at the bottom anymore.
Right.
We were, we were at the bottom on just about every single rate.
Well, good then, well, physically, that's good, unless, unless we didn't get the job done, because everyone applauds us, we do the best job on the road, so I'm not sure how they're gonna...
I thought they did a great job on the roads last year.
So, kudos to everywhere.
And by the way, I think they did a great job after the storm this morning too.
Yeah, we still, that's why I've had to leave a couple times, we're still struggling with Eversource, getting them to resolve some power issues. They're supposed to be back in town eight o'clock tomorrow morning to, to resolve that.
How many of our residents are still out?
I don't know, tonight, this morning, there were two-hundred-and-thirty-six homes out. I know a lot in the Park Street area are still out.
Can I get a, can I get a motion on this?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Call is in favor?
Aye.
We can have that, we'll be on the next agenda, Marion, so we'll put it on the, okay?
I got a couple of things, just real quick.
Can we do the minutes? We have minutes of October, so I just have to run through my sheet, where you go, a couple of queries. Who did the minutes?
I've reviewed the minutes and Marion did a-
The guy to your right.
Great job, very comprehensive minutes.
Okay.
So, motion to accept the minutes of October tenth, twenty-seventeen.
Thank you. Uh, all is in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Jack, I need to cut you off, I just wanted to finish my piece of paper. What do you have for us there, sir?
Uh, we still have two-hundred-and-one people out, according to-
Mostly in Park Street?
I think the Park Street area is the, is the largest, yeah.
And I think Myrtle was hit pretty hard too, wasn't it?
In Lake, yeah. But we're at the point now where we're just waiting for Eversource. We do have a tree, tree company coming in tomorrow to help us out a little bit, just to speed things along. Just, I got like five, just quick updates. So, the Warelands, Sue, Marion and I attended the auction for the property on Cleveland Street, Borman Street, sorry, Borman Street, and they had, they auctioned that off and ended up going to the bank for seven-hundred-and-some-odd thousand dollars, basically what they owed. There were a couple bidders there, but nobody even flinched. The bank just took it in, in one vote and nobody was going to match that price. I think it's still considered highly overpriced for what can be done with that property. It's a beautiful piece of property, but it's good.
A beautiful old home, one of the oldest homes, I think, in the town.
So, there is a woman there that was, that was in attendance that we talked to for a while, who is interested in, now, she's got, she does have a relationship with the bank, and so now they've gone through the legal, the bank has gone through the, gotten ownership of the property, and-
Does that mean they paid off all our taxes, or did, it was already paid? Did we get all tax money on that?
Um, they'll have, yeah, the bank will pay off the taxes now.
Which must be good, but decent, right?
Yeah, I don't know what the back taxes were, but it's only, it's not, it's assessed, I mean, it's not a chunk, I mean, it's-
True.
It's not a chunk change, but it's not like a, you know, it's not like a two-million-dollar home. We met, Bob and I met with DEP in Norfolk to informally give them an update on the well project. That went very well. The consultants from EVP, Environmental Partners, seem to be on track from the feedback we got back from DEP. So, they will go through, now they're going through the next phase of submitting for, trying to get our, our permit approved. So, DEP will have to advertise and there'll be a period of public feedback, again, from the likes of the Charles River watershed people and et cetera. But they were optimistic that it would go pretty smoothly, so. And they were, there were some, so we did, we have to do a five-day pump test, we actually extended it to seven days, and there were some, so they spent a lot of time with technical analysis, there was, there was some drawdown at the end, which was a little bit concerning, but when they, they actually did some analysis of, they had some monitoring wells around that weren't, were outside of this scope, and because it was a, the period was very dry anyway, there was a lot of, there was actually drawdown on, on-
On those too, so it was almost, it was almost environmental as opposed to action of what they were doing.
So, DEP, you know, we had the person who's going to issue the permit, we were sitting with her, so she, again, there was very positive feedback from her. Met with the fire union to talk about, we've got an injured firefighter who's out for about three months, and so we had some discussions about, they have the right to fill that shift, but we convinced them to allow us to fill it with a provisional firefighter, which save us, instead of paying an experienced firefighter at an overtime rate to fill that shift, we're hiring basically a call firefighter at his standard rate, so it's-
It gives them training too, right? Kind of live training, I think, it's a way, I mean, I know-
So, they were, they were, they did not push back. They, you know, they asked questions and, you know, but, but they were fine. So, Gus Reeves is, is now a provisional firefighter.
I buy my wood from him, thank you.
You probably do, maybe, Tucker Turner, Turner Street.
Yep. I bought it from him last I bought, yeah.
So, the only thing is that when, so when, when he has to do some of his paramedic training and his coursework and leaves the shift open, firefighters will backfill that, that shift. So, that was, it was a good, very appreciate their working with us on that. Bob and I met with a, a party in the center of town that wants to, a potential developer, talk about a drainage issue, actually Scott was there as well. Bob's reached out to our former consultants, hopefully we're going to get that solved pretty quickly. But, so, good news is, I think we were, we, we had some good communication and we're making some progress. Bob hadn't heard back as of today from our old consultant, but we think we're on, we still think we'll, we'll get that answer pretty quick. Extended an offer to somebody today to, I don't even know, since our last meeting, we, I think right after our last meeting, our Michael Yang, our IT director, tendered his resignation. He is going to, up to Deadham, back in the, in the, he wants to be in the school municipal world, it's a larger environment up there, he's, he's looking for career growth. But we extended an offer to somebody today to replace Michael, and Michael's going to work with, his, his actual last day is tomorrow, but he's going to, between the part-time employee we still have and Michael being, whether he's on the phone or, or helping us out, off-hours, he's, he'll help transition us to the, to the new-
And the person accepted your offer?
He has not yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
We extended it today, he wanted to think about it for, you know, talk to his wife, all that, all that good stuff. So, I think he'll accept. He lives, he lives in Easton, not too far away.
How'd you find him?
Advertised and hit a couple of the IT-
Party sites.
Job sites.
IT party sites.
We had, I think we had at least three good candidates, really strong candidates, at three and a half.
Good.
Yeah. So, I think that will, that will work out well. And that was-
Wish Mike the best.
Yeah, he was great.
Mike is a great guy.
He's been working with-
Good man.
Yeah, he's-
Really, really nice guy.
Get it done attitude, no matter what, you know.